Hello everyone and welcome. You are all so very welcome. This is a lovely sight to be seen. Welcome to the Fairfax Town Council meeting, February 3rd. And I'd like to convene and call this meeting to order and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the highest church in America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And can we begin, Madam Clerk, with a roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Weinsoff.
Here.
Councilmember Kohler.
Here.
Councilmember Reed.
Here.
Councilmember Lax.
Here.
Mayor Goddard.
Here. As I started a tradition last council meeting, which was my first council meeting as mayor, this is only my second, so you'll have to bear with me if I make some mistakes. I would like to dedicate this meeting tonight to a gentleman named Doug Tompkins. Doug Tompkins was one of the greatest conservationists of our time. I could tell you many stories. He, at this point, just so you know, has worked with a team to preserve about 10 million acres of land in southern Chile, in Patagonia, and begun a national park movement in Chile and Argentina. He passed away in a kayaking accident about a month ago, and I wanted to read this poem in his honor. It's only one line. This is to his wild legacy. And Henry David Thoreau says that wildness is the preservation of the world. So that is very appropriate for all of you here who are doing so much to protect wildness. And with that, we will move on to the meeting protocol.
Madam Mayor.
What did I forget?
Approval agenda, but I'd like to make some comments regarding that, if I may.
Okay, thank you, Gary. Yes, please.
So, Madam Mayor and the council staff would actually request that we pull Item 5, and that's the Fairfax Open Spaces Annual Report. They'd like to take some time to revise it and it'll come back to you in March. We also like to pull Item 9. That has to do with the resolution regarding the town's conflict of interest code. We'll bring that back to you in March. And we also like to pull Item 11. Item 11 is the public hearing on the urgency ordinance regarding medical marijuana cultivation. And with the governor's signing of AB 21, eliminating the March 1 deadline, there's really no need for that item this evening.
Any comments or questions about the agenda?
I just have a comment on the consent calendar about pulling one item, and I don't know if I should wait or... Shall I wait till we get to the consent calendar?
Sorry. Yes, you would wait till you get to the consent calendar.
Okay. I'll wait. Thanks. Otherwise, I'd make a... Oh, I think David was good. I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda with the changes, pulling Item 5, 9, and 11.
Second.
Okay. Motion, Kohler and second, Weinsoff. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
None opposed? And we will talk about the meeting protocol at this point. The mayor shall maintain order at the meetings. The council and the audience are expected to refrain from using profane language and/or ridiculing the character or motives of the council members, the staff, or members of the public, and to maintain the standards of tolerance and civility. So if everyone would please turn off your cellphones or put them in silent mode. Town Council will review the agenda at 10:00 PM to ascertain which items, if any, will be continued to another meeting. And any item and any matter not started by 11:30 PM will be continued to an adjourned or regular council meeting unless the council votes to suspend this rule. We have the privilege of inviting Chief Moran to come up and swear in a new sergeant and officer.
Thank you, Mayor. Can I have Officer Les Santos come up here? So I want to introduce the community, the council, to Officer Les Santos. He's a reserve officer with us. And William Cade, who you probably all know. We're promoting William Cade to sergeant from the position of corporal. And Les Santos is starting with us. He started with us this month, and he's in his training program. You can make a turnaround and you can look at the public, too. And just keep doing that as I talk. Just keep twirling and it'll be fine. So Les comes to us via New York. He was born in New York. He made his way to Texas where he grew up, if I have that right. He graduated high school. This is always for David. Here we go. Not as bad as the other ones, David. Graduated high school in 2003. So he's 30 years old. And he resides in Vallejo, and he's a property manager in Vallejo. And here to support him tonight, I'll get the names all wrong, but we have future mother-in-law over here, and we have his grandmother, and his sister, and his future wife, current fiance. They're all here to support him. So we'll swear him in. And William Cade. Now do your twirl. Do your twirl. There you go. Good. Okay. Do you want to keep the sergeant stripes? There you go. See? William Cade has been with the department for nine years now. We hired him in 2007. He's worked in a variety of assignments. He's trained a lot of our new officers through those years. He has received four or five MAD awards, that's the Mothers Against Drunk Driving, for his tireless efforts in drunk driving enforcement. He has also been the recipient of three Police Officer of the Year awards that's voted on by his peers. I think the voting was rigged, but he won it three times. He was promoted to corporal in 2014, and January of '16, I'm promoting him to sergeant. Well-deserved. Job well done by him in the nine years he's worked for the town. So having said that, we will have the town clerk swear both of these gentlemen in.
All right. Could you please raise your right hand? And if you have a question to that, you can keep it up. I... Say your name.
I, William Cade.
You can only swear.
Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic. That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California. That I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion. And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
So I did forget one thing. Some of the employees that are on duty tonight came to support them. We've got Guy Crowe, one of our dispatchers, 30 years in the business, 35 years. Corporal Rhonda Richardson, let's say 20 years in the business, 22. 15 in Fairfax. Guy Crowe, how many years in Fairfax? 11 years in Fairfax. Sheldon Short? Day and a half? No, how many? Three. Oh, in Fairfax. He was a cadet. He was a dispatcher. Now he's a police officer with us, as we all know. And Jonathan Judge? Year and a half? Year and a half. There we go. Okay, so you're lucky. You're done. Okay. Get out. So I want to give the honor of pinning the badge on Officer Santos to his grandmother.
It occurred to you, to the council? All right, thank you. Thank you for indulging me.
Anytime, Chief. So we'll be moving on to the next section of the meeting, which is the announcements, and then we'll be getting to you guys really soon. So thank you for your patience. We have a lot of announcements because there are a lot of wonderful things going on in Fairfax, and so here we go. We have vacancies on boards and commissions, the following: three on open space, or now two. We've just appointed a new member to the open space committee, so thank you. So we have two openings on open space. One on the G-PIC, which is the General Plan Implementation Committee. Two on the volunteer board, and one on the tree committee. Applications for any of the committees are available at Town Hall and on the town website, and you can contact Madam Clerk for information. On February 4th, that's tomorrow night, at White Hill Middle School, please come and participate and learn about flood control in the Ross Valley. There will be a meeting that will be lively, and you will have an opportunity to garner lots of information and to ask the questions that you may have. That's tomorrow night, White Hill Middle School, at 7:00 PM. February 7th, Alice in Wonderland Tea Party, which you guys might be the perfect audience for this, or maybe not. No, yeah, you are. And that will take place on Sunday, the 7th of February, from 2:00 to 4:00 PM, right here. And for tickets and details, you can contact Fairfax Recreation Manager Maria Baird, or you could just come to the front desk at Town Hall and ask if you can come to the tea party. On February 26th, Fairfax Deep Green Incentive Program starts. Deep Green is a program of Marin Clean Energy. The first 100 Fairfax residents to sign up receive a $5 monthly credit for 12 months. For details, you can contact Marin Clean Energy. Saturdays, and every Saturday from 9:00 to 11:00 AM, at the Community Church at 2398 Sir Francis Drake, which is right on the corner of Oak Manor, and Sir Francis Drake, as most of you guys know, there is a food pantry. For anyone who may need some extra food, it's an excellent place to come. They also always need volunteers, and kids are welcome as well. So please feel free, if you have need, to come and receive food there. On the 27th of February, Supervisor Katie Rice will be holding Neighborhood Office Hours from 2:00 to 4:00. Here? Is that correct? Or at the library? I'm sorry. It's at the library. So again, on February 27th, from 2:00 to 4:00. You can come and you can express your concerns, and you can share your dreams, and you can ask your questions. So please take advantage of that, if you have some of those. Two more things. Get Ready, which is a program for basic emergency preparedness, will be holding a class on February 9th from 7:00 to 8:30, and it is going to be held at the library. And just call the library to reserve a spot. It's an excellent program. It helps everybody get ready in their homes to deal with an emergency, fire or flood, and you'll learn a lot. So check in with the library to sign up. The space is limited. And finally, I want to announce that PG&E anticipates onsite construction work, which will begin on Monday, this coming Monday, the 8th, for an electrical upgrade that needs to take place on Bolinas Road, right in front of 31 Bolinas Road. So PG&E anticipates that the work may take two to three weeks. PG&E intends to maintain traffic flow along Bolinas most of the time, or to the best of their ability, but there could be some delays. They will only impact street parking where absolutely necessary to maintain traffic flow. So we beg your patience during this time, and the typical work hours will be from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, Monday through Thursday. There should be no impact on parking or traffic, starting Thursday after work hours, through early Monday morning. So thank you, and if you have any questions, you can contact Town Hall. And Barbara, you had an additional announcement.
Yeah, I actually have two things. So some of you may recall our pedestrian flag pilot, and this is a pilot where people pick up flags in two areas of the town to cross the street more safely. And that was brought to us by Emma Lauder, who some of you may know, although she goes to White Hill. And Emma's going to launch this program, she's been working with our town clerk, Michelle, and myself, to launch this program Saturday, February 27. And I also know she's looking for some volunteers to help with the monitoring. It'll be a pilot. It's going to last six months, and then we'll bring it back to the council and look at, you know, shall we continue this? Are these the right places? So look forward to that. And also, I just want to mention on the Deep Green Incentive, the Fairfax Climate Action Committee will also be tabling at various events to help people sign up for Deep Green. So usually, somebody is at the farmer's market on Sunday, so if you're interested, but we'll be meeting to discuss other places to table. But you can sign up online. First 100 get $5 off a month. And one more thing, the Cool California Challenge is something that various cities in the state have signed up for. Fairfax is one of those cities. And you can win something if you basically figure out your carbon footprint, and cities can win. But there also is a little contest between all the Marin cities that have signed up. And if you do sign up, potentially Fairfax could win, and certain people could win tickets to Sweetwater to see the Garcia Project. And I'll send that information to our town clerk so we can post that on the website. I think you have to sign up by February 28th for those tickets. So that's all. Thank you, Mayor.
And if there wasn't enough going on in February, for all of those of you who may be interested, and we're talking to people at home, too, because we're all on TV here, just so you guys know. On February 29th, there will be a workshop here in the Women's Club from 7:00 to 9:00 PM, and this is for all folks who may be interested in bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure in the town of Fairfax. We will be updating our plan, which is our bicycle pedestrian plan, that is part of our general plan, and this will be an opportunity for input, for questions, to learn about what projects have been proposed before we come out with the final update for the plan. So that's the 29th of February in this room, from 7:00 to 9:00 PM. Thank you. And now, the moment you've all been waiting for. We have a very special group of people here tonight, and there are a lot of you. So I'm going to introduce you as the heroes of Fairfax, otherwise known as Green Team Past and Present, and their fearless leader, Laura Honda. Laura Honda is the matriarch of all Green Teams. Fairfax kids who were in her fourth grade class, and the number is huge and it's growing, know about newts and other endangered species. They understand the watershed in which we live and the importance of healthy soil. They know how to advocate for zero waste, and they love worms. Most of them. Laura is passionate and a passionate advocate for the environment, and she teaches science, social studies, math, and language arts through a green lens, planting seeds for the future stewards of the earth. And those are you guys. I have an enormous amount of respect and gratitude for Laura's tireless perseverance and fortitude as Fairfax's eco-warrior, and I'm also proud to be able to call her my friend. So with that, I hear we have a wonderful presentation in store.
We are Ms. Honda's... We are Manor School students from Green Team Club in Ms. Honda's fourth grade class. Our names are Elena...
Karina...
Jane...
Zoe...
Ella...
Andrew...
Nick...
Ivan...
Eleanor...
Austin...
We hope you enjoy our presentation.
We would like Fairfax to have a pollinator policy because we are worried about the bees. Having a policy would mean that if public places wanted to do landscaping, they will have to plant plants that bees like that are good for them. It means that plants that give pollen and nectar to bees will be planted in public
Bees and other pollinators are so important because they pollinate our flowers and make our world the most beautiful place ever.
They also pollinate one-third of the food we eat. If you love fruit, nuts, vegetables, honey, and chocolate, you must love the bees.
Pollinators are endangered because of loss of habitat. We have paved roads and built buildings over their habitat. Also, invasive non-native plants take over their habitat, and poisons and pesticides have all caused our bees to become endangered.
The solution...
Ella, there you go.
Okay. The solution to the problem is to remove non-native invasive plants and to plant plants that bees like, such as poppies, cinnostis, and lupin. We have a list from you from our friend Dr. Frankie, the entomologist of UC Berkeley.
Native plants give pollen and nectar to bees and other pollinators. These good plants are habitat-friendly and do need much water. They're mostly drought-resistant, and they are beautiful.
Dr. Frankie says that if you plant the right plants, the bees will come. It doesn't have to be a big garden. Even planter boxes with flowering plants will help. That is good news.
We would like to encourage everyone everywhere to plant plants with nectar and pollen for our pollinators.
We have a copy for you of the pollinator policy from the city of Berkeley. We would like to have a similar policy for Fairfax.
Thank you for listening. Thank you for listening to our presentation. Please remember to appreciate pollinators and to do your best to protect them. You have a chance to make a difference, to help them. We hope you will.
Okay. Yes, please. Okay.
Now we're going to do the Green Team song.
Okay, you ready? All of you join in? Are you ready? One, are you ready? One, two, three. (singing) We want to tell you about the birds and the bees and the flowers and the trees and the sun up above, everything that we love. We want to tell you about the creatures and the lakes, the newts and the snakes, the fishes in the sea, foxes running free, because every little thing that we do affects every little thing that we love. And every little thing that we love needs to be taken care of. We want to tell you about protect habitat for wildlife. Plant some trees, save energy. Preserve our water, which we need to do for every little thing, including me and you, because every little thing that we do affects every little thing that we love. And every little thing that we love needs to be taken care of. We want to tell you about the birds and the bees and the flowers and the trees and the sun up above, everything that we love.
Warming up? Oh, there we go. So Ms. Honda, could you please come up? She might. So we have a proclamation for you, and this is the first time I've ever gotten to read a proclamation. I'm very honored to be able to read one for Laura Honda and her class of last year, which are this year's fifth graders. Right? Okay. And I'd like to thank Peter Lax for doing a remarkable job in getting the facts straight and putting together what I think is a lovely honoring for you. No, this is your moment. So the Town of Fairfax proclamation in honor of the 2014 and 15 fourth grade class of Manor School and their teacher, Laura Honda. Whereas in the fall of 2014, in the midst of an historic drought, Laura Honda and her fourth grade class began discussing ways of saving water at Manor School, including conducting a water use audit of Manor School. And whereas this discussion led to a larger discussion of water conservation for the state of California, including the idea of requiring the state of California to require drought-resistant native species for the state's landscaping. And whereas Ms. Honda and her class then worked closely with our Assemblyman Mark Levine to draft legislation to implement these ideas, presenting this idea as legislation. And whereas the class then traveled to Sacramento in April of 2015 and presented testimony before the California State Assembly in support of the legislation, Assembly Bill 606, and returned to Sacramento in the summer of 2015 and presented further testimony before the California State Senate in support of the bill. And whereas the members of the class wrote numerous letters to elected officials to urge passage of AB 606. And whereas AB 606 passed unanimously in the California Assembly and California Senate and was signed into law by Governor Jerry Brown on October 9th, 2015, and became officially codified as California Government Code 11011.29. And whereas the California Senate Rules Committee officially recognized Ms. Honda and Manor School as the inspiration and original source for the bill, and acknowledged that the use of native plants would also help our birds and bees and other wildlife by creating pockets of habitat for them. And whereas AB 606 requires every California state agency where feasible to now reduce water consumption and increase water efficiencies for every property it builds upon, or purchases, or replaces landscaping or irrigation. And whereas AB 606 requires all California agencies where feasible to replace landscaping and drought-tolerant with drought-tolerant plants and especially native plant species, and use recycled water and/or capture rainwater for irrigation. And whereas the lasting impact of AB 606 will be to save countless gallons of water each year and associated energy... What can we say? Thank you, thank you, thank you. You can go, no. Thank you guys so, so much for inspiring us and for leading the way. And I want to thank Manor School, which I love deeply and dearly and always will, and Peg, the principal extraordinaire who came to support all you guys tonight. And thank you very much.
And all the parents, of course.
And all the parents, of course. Great. You guys can stay. Can learn a lot about democracy here. All right, so moving right along to open time for public expression. We would ask that everyone would respect the 3-minute time limit per person. If you wish to address the council, please approach the podium and state your name and address if you are comfortable doing so. Individuals have 3 minutes to speak and 5 minutes if you're representing a group. This is the time set aside for individuals wishing to address the council on matters which are not on the agenda. And state law, Government Code 5495, or 54.2 provides that the council is not permitted to take action and strictly limits the right of the council to discuss the unagendized items unless we can demonstrate that there's an emergency nature to this. So, thank you, and please do respect the 3-minute time limit. It's on the clock right there.
Your mic seems kinda short. You guys can ignore me as usual or listen to this as poetry or truth, whatever, take your pick. Lordesses and minfolk, lords and ladies of the jury, judges and disbelievers and believers and disindhat, I'm here to make nonsense of our dollars and senselessness. Money is what is important, right? You know the nuts and crazy folk from when you was a kid? I'm starting to realize that perhaps they was not all crazy. And/or perhaps there were reasons and things which drove them over the edge, like our world. Perhaps and likely I'm one of them, and here we is looking at each other. I'm of the opinion that we are all loco nuts and just what is an education anyway? Most of you are going to misunderstand me, whatever I say, English or not, and just what are we doing here on our little town stage or on the worldly stage? Most of us, Dems, Republicans, Greens, Blacks, Whites, Blues, whatevers, all we do is react and spout and fight over our certainties and beliefs. As righteous, overentitled westerners, and blah, 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 glazed over, I've lost you already, dismissed, discounted, belittled, and minimized, eh? Obviously off my rocker. So let's just shoot each other and get it over with, locally and globally. I'm right, you know, or more right than you are, ahem, oops, lost you again. And when somebody shut that guy up, we have work to do. This is my planet, you know, mine. Oh, what's that, we say? We bought and paid for it and we've been here for a couple of whiles now? All righteous and money entitled? I wonder who we stole or borrowed the land from, the living commons from, when we say we bought it or we own it? Just what do we mean? We own it? We paid for it? Wow, it's amazing what you can get for 1.2 million dollars in Fairfax anymore. What about the air? What about the water? What about the soil? Oh, shut up, we have work to do and there's money to be made. No, we're late to fly and drive away on our vacations and buy some new disposable junk which we just can't live without. And please don't bother us with the details or the remains and landfills and wreckage we have and are leaving everywhere where life once lived. Leave us be and don't bring up all that community or environmental or love nonsense. We are too busy making a living and saving for our BMWs and Teslas and to pay the trash company to haul away our stuff week after year. What's that? There is no away? Hmm, where do we send our crap? This is our planet, you know. Who needs ecosystems when we have ecosystems of ownership and fences of mine? Don't bother us with the homeless and don't bother us with choice in the schools. Don't bother us and do make sure the roads are paved and the toilets flush and remember to wash the car. Keep your priorities straight. Dot your i's and cross your t's and quit your babbling and blah, 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 there is money to be made and quit wasting our time. Get off my land, we say, pull yourself up by your bootstraps, get a job so you can serve burgers and buy stuff or so you can mine or melt continents and ice caps. Money is what is important, don't you know? Not the water, not the air, and not the soil, not interconnected diverse communities and ecosystems, certainly not real education or schooling. And we on all sides of everything are still just jabbering monies and jingling monkeys, oops, lost you again, but we never had each other to begin with. Now get off my land and leave us alone. Can we end our stranglehold of toxically defended and over-weaponized ownership of the earth before we go untilt and reset? And yeah, it's too much to change or deal with it. Money and stuff and us and them are what is important after all. And me, I'm just mumbling in the wilderness with the winds blowing through, another crazy on a soapbox in need of a scrubbing. Tacoon is an interesting word and concept. It's one of my favorites, actually. Repairing the fabric of life, whatever that means. And from where I sit and stand and spin, we have some choices to make. Avoid it all, enjoy consuming and fighting and do a living and, or perhaps we can start giving back and rebuilding the commons. I'll return to my insecure and nondisclosed location to dialogue with my good friends, Chicken Little Soup and Don Coyote, Don Coyote. And now, back to our regularly unusual programming.
Thank you, Sierra. Ryan.
Ryan O'Neal from Iron Springs Road. It's nice to see you all. I'm here to convey a frustration, a concern. I'm mad a little bit, and I've done a lot of homework. And your job as council member is to do homework. And I don't like to single anybody out. Unfortunately, I'm gonna single out the mayor. And I'm doing it in a public forum because you have been doing things in a public forum that I feel are inappropriate. Normally I would just ask you to the coffee shop, explain my concerns, but it's gone beyond that. We as council members, past and current, have an obligation to the greater community. And when you use your position as a council member to state positions of a minority group such as the Ross Valley Charter School in public, whether you are stating yourself as a council member, a mayor, or just a citizen, it's kinda like asking a judge to disregard the statements that were just made. The jury still hears them. And I think it's incredibly irresponsible of you and to some extent you, John. There's a lot going on and a lot of people have their head in the sands about it. I know you're a founding member on the MAP, John, and I know that you are both big proponents of MAP. I know that some of you even endorsed a candidate, you know. Privately, if you have feelings about a Ross Valley Charter as a positive thing, great, have the conversation with somebody. Even publicly, if you want to use your, your office to endorse a pro candidate for that advocacy, that's fine. That's done. But we've gone way over the line here now. You write letters to the state. I went to the state board. I was up there talking about that I don't, I'm not against passion for parents wanting better education for their kids. I'm certainly not against any parent who wants to advocate for the best of their children. But it's reckless and irresponsible for you guys not to do the backend of the homework on what you have put forth. It is very possible, and I don't know how much some of you follow this and some of you in the public follow this, but it's very possible that if the Ross Valley Charter that has put forth a petition to use Red Hill is denied, and it may based on liability reasons alone and the traffic study that we had in front of us in 2009 that we all read and found out how difficult that was when the, when the school board proposed a new school and how crazy the Deer Park neighborhood went and all the homework we had to do from that and all the listening we had to do to those people, it's absolutely reckless of you both to come out in public, to some extent more Renee than John, and advocate for something that could, could lose our own school. So what can happen here? Okay, Red Hill is denied, let's say. Then what happens? This Ross Valley Charter will file a Prop 39 request and that will force our school district, our elected school district, to give them a location that's up to current standards and codes, which means that we are in a very serious possibility of losing Manor School to the general public of the kids. That generally and directly affects everybody's property values in this town. If someone wants to move into this town and they don't have a local school for that child to go to, that's gonna diminish property values. Your job as a council member is not to come in and weigh in on projects because if something does come to your council and the Fairfax Town Council is expected to weigh on something important like a Deer Park, Renee, you have to recuse yourself. Your job is not to come out in public and make statements for or against any issues, especially one as big as this. We could lose Manor School. My property value could go down. It is a possibility. It is being discussed in these school boards.
Ryan, we need to respect the time limit on this.
Sure. No problem.
Unless you're speaking for a group.
Well, I mean, I understand. You gave Sierra 5 minutes, you gave, you cut me off after 30 seconds. It's reckless, and I'm not trying to single you out because I think you are a good person. And I want to make sure I do that because I don't like it when people come rail on a person, individual. I think that's wrong. But you're not acting in the best interest of our community and you're not doing the homework to find out the ramifications of the decisions that may be made if this charter is put through. Thank you.
Anyone else in open time? Seeing none? Let me get back to where we were. So we're going to move on to the consent calendar. Can you, can you wait until it's time for the public to comment on consent? Let's check in with council members first. Thank you. So Barbara.
Yeah, I, I was hoping to move item 7. I'm supportive of a lot of it, but I want to have a discussion of one part of it, so I'd like to pull it from consent.
Okay, number 7. So do you think we, we need to pull it and have a discussion or is it something that we can look at?
Well, I'll briefly mention, I want to say that I'm very supportive of the Ross Valley Healthy Community Collaborative and I'm reading the goals and seeing a lot of the work that's been done. I think it's a great service to our community. The area that concerns me is the goals for Ross Valley Healthy Community Collaborative. Number 5, which is advocate for public policies that address shifting healthy community social norms in Ross Valley. Well, I think that's a good goal. What I saw was the collaborative lobbying against a business. And I could see the collaborative lobbying for legislation, which I think has been done as well. But I don't think we're paying for lobbying, even for legislation. So I would like to see, I think that was a very unfortunate situation. I think our business could go out because of it and I don't think that's appropriate, but would, I understand the passion behind it. So I'm not interested in funding that. So if we eliminate that goal, I would be fine. And also with you as a member of that group, talking to that group about, you know, as private citizens, potentially getting involved, but I think getting involved in businesses is really not a good thing.
Okay. No, I appreciate your sharing that. I can absolutely deliver that back and we can address this as we move forward. If we want to have more discussion, maybe we could pull it and talk at the end, but I, I hear absolutely concerns.
Well, I think what I would say is if we struck that bullet, I would be happy with fully funding it, but if we want to have more discussion, maybe we need to pull it and just do it very briefly.
Uh, well, let's pull it and put it at the end.
Okay.
And so that we can have more of a discussion.
Thank you. Thanks for listening.
Yeah, no, thank you. Anyone else? On consent? John?
I was just going to speak to the person from the audience, but...
Okay, well, let's go ahead and, and go out to the public for public comment on consent and then we'll bring it back here.
I would like to request...
Can you come up here?
Thank you. I would like to request that number 6 be pulled from the consent in order for a few of us to have the opportunity to be able to speak on that particular item.
Okay, and I'm gonna look to David on that, so we'll pull that for, for a discussion. And could I request that we pull that and have it discussed immediately after consent so you don't have to wait?
Thank you.
Okay. So what we have here on consent now, John, more?
Yeah, well, I would, I would move items 2, 3, 4, 8, and 10 for consent.
I would second that.
Okay. So motion read and second caller to pull, could you say that one more time? Which ones?
To, to move 2, 3, 4, 8, and 10.
Oh, got it. Okay, to approve, to move those and second.
To approve those.
Yes.
Second caller.
Clerk, good? Okay, and...
All in favor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And none opposed? Okay, aye. So let's go ahead and speak about item 6 and I will, I will look to David unless there was a particular question.
Yes, hi, I'm Diane DeMarley, and I'd like to pass something out for the council and I wanted to address the council and Mr. Weinstein in particular, and wanted to say that respectfully, while it's understandable that Mr. Weinstein is not pleased that there- while it's understandable that Mr. Weinsdorf is not pleased that there is public opposition to the White Hill School Lefty Gomez Field Detention Basin Plan, for which Mr. Weinsdorf has been advocating so strongly, there are many of your constituents who do not agree that this basin site is the best or only flood mitigation solution for Fairfax. Our website, saveleftygomez.com, was begun by a group of concerned residents. Our aim is to compile and distribute relevant information to help busy working parents and others learn what's at stake if White Hill School's Lefty Gomez Field is dug up to make way for a dual-use stormwater detention basin facility. We strive to keep the www/saveleftygomez.com website up to date and accurate, and we include source references. Mr. Weinsdorf, we're concerned about the fact that you made public accusations that we are circulating misinformation. In your council members' report, which was circulated to our Meadowland Homeowners Association, you wrote, quote, "Misinformation is being circulated in print and online asserting that detention basins generally are unsafe, and that the Lefty Gomez design in particular will result in toxic debris, environmental damage, and drownings," unquote. While we have talked about safety being an issue, the rest of your statement is an inflammatory misrepresentation. These are your words, not ours. Mr. Weinsdorf, we hope that you will be open to hearing constituents' concerns about this issue in the spirit of our shared passion for our community. Thank you.
You know, to make sure that I answer all of your questions, if it's okay with you, I just want to pick up on a few of the points that she's raising. First of all, you do know that the comments that I'm making are not pulled out of thin air, and you do know that we all get forwarded the emails, and not the emails, but the Save Lefty Gomez stuff that you're...
Yes.
Okay. And you do know that on there you raise the issue more than once, and over a period of weeks, about the fact that in another place with a different design, a couple of kids terribly died in a detention basin. And you, wait, wait.
We do.
And you do know, and I'm sure Ms. Suzuki passed it on to you, that I responded immediately in early January to that and said, whoa, 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 let's take, and I'll quote myself here off the top of my head, let's take the temperature down a little bit. And further, that I asked and offered the opportunity for Supervisor Rice and myself to meet with you folks, and to this, and you spoke about this, or Suzuki did, the last time we were here. And to this day, you guys have not taken us up on that offer. Let me just go on to a couple of other things here. It's not public opposition that I'm concerned about. Public opposition we're going to find on almost everything. I often say in Fairfax, if you want to move a stop sign six feet to the left, you better be in for a two-year battle about that conversation. It's all about the fact that we want to have public participation, and that, in my statement, which is in here, is absolutely critical. How can we bring more people into the conversation? So you will remember, because it was only 24 hours ago, that we met with the HOA, and that was the common refrain, I thought, in a terrific conversation. Let's get everybody's voice in this as we go forward. And why do we have to have that? Because I'm going to state it again, infrequently in life do you find that you don't have options. You know, even when you look in your, the toolbox in the back of the shed, you have a couple of screwdrivers that are going to help you out. In this rare situation, after an almost $3 million set of studies, half a decade of analysis by, I'm going to say, some very smart people, we don't have anything else. This is it. So I have been extremely, I would say, over the top and arch in a way that is unmodulated for me, after having sat here for some 10 years. I think most of my colleagues would say yes, from time to time I get exercised about stuff. But in this particular issue, I don't even have a filter, because we have one thing, crazy as it might sound, we have one opportunity to alleviate the threat, the danger. So when I read the stuff that was coming out of your website, and it wasn't just me, it was council member McInerney and the other folks that sit on the Flood Zone 9 Advisory Board, we just, we were just stunned about this, because we want to have that measured conversation with you folks. But the conversation isn't going to be about how, it's going to be the design, it's going to be about ensuring, as I stated here, that the safe routes to school stuff out there is protected, as we discussed last night, about protecting the creeks and the ecosystem in that thing. But it's about having a conversation about the design, and it's about how we're going to implement this, ensure the protection for the neighborhood as we go forward, that sort of conversation. But I have to tell you now that it's not going to be about Lefty, non-Lefty. This goes forward, because if it doesn't go forward, or your opposition halts it in some way, I know Frank Edgar and Mayor Green in San Onofre have raised the specter of a referendum. I'm telling you right now, we will flood. We may be dead in it, and heaven knows it would be nice if it held off for 100 or 200 years, but someday, without that, we will flood. And I have to tell you, stand in the way of this, and on that miserable day, everybody who opposes it, unfortunately, will have to look in the mirror and stand up and take responsibility for that. And I hate to be over the top on this, or to be unduly passionate, but when you sit in meetings for a decade, and you study this stuff for more hours than I can ever recall, that's where we are. So what I want is, I want your passion, the organization that you put together on Glen Drive, others that are joining in with you, to share the opportunity to design. But to oppose, just putting us into a bad place that none of us want to see, because everybody sitting in this room, I think, knows what happened on December 31st, '05. It's just waiting to happen again.
Well, that wasn't what was said at the Flood Board meeting, that there was other options, and from the papers that are on the watershed site, et cetera, there are, as far as I understand, other options.
No.
But I haven't heard that from...
No.
That's where you stand. I, I see it differently.
So, you know, I was just going to, if you don't mind my stepping in here, that tomorrow night, were you all planning to go?
Yeah.
Okay. I mean, if there is a question about whether there are other options, it has to be...
It makes sense to do, sure.
But it also has to be had. That conversation has to be had. So not just to continue to hear that there are other options, or this is the only option. We need to ask the questions of the people who literally are looking at it on the ground and get to some satisfactory answer that doesn't just sound like, hey, don't push.
Right.
So I hear the frustration, and I understand the gravity of the issue. But please do come tomorrow night so that the experts and David has, you know, more to fill in the gaps with, despite the fact that he's very intimate with this and has done hard work all along.
Yeah.
So please do come tomorrow night. I'm interested and look forward to really understanding this more and more as we go forward.
Me too. I mean, I just wanted to make our point that we are doing work, we are diligent, and we don't appreciate being disparaged or being said that we're sending out misinformation.
See, I just want to get into this. I don't want you to feel that it was disparaging. I asked, I specifically wrote to, and I'll give you the email. When I said in private, in a private email to Suzuki, I said, you got to stop this. You can't talk about a public project being paid for with public funds overseen by public officials that are going to kill children. You can't put that on there. You have to take...
We didn't say that it was going to kill children.
You did.
We said that there are sites where this has happened before, and then we cited references.
It's a thin line between saying that two...
It is a thin line, but it's not what you quoted as having said.
So, I'm sorry, but being the mayor, I get to step in here. There is so much heat, and it's big, and it's growing, and we really do need to come together and sit with facts and sit with figures and look at it on the ground and not, you know, do this back-and-forth hot potato with this. And so I really encourage this conversation to continue, but possibly not here and now, as we're not going to get anywhere. But there, it will be had.
Right. Thank you.
And you should be listened to.
Mayor, I have a point of order I wanted to check perhaps with the town attorney. So David is very passionate about this, and my question is, we're just receiving a report. By accepting this report, it doesn't necessarily mean that the council is agreeing to all of this. I may have different opinions on certain aspects of it, and others may as well. So I just wanted to make sure that we're accepting a report by an individual council member who's expressing his views. Granted, David's been involved in this much longer than any of us, but I just want to make sure that's what we're doing.
Yes, in general, when you accept a report, there's actually no action, it's just a report that's placed on there. You're having a discussion, that's fine. It'd be up to the council, though, if you wanted it in the future, to actually agendize an item for discussion. So that's a different type of issue.
I guess typically, when we have an individual council member do something, there's the caveat that says that this is the views of the individual council members and not representative of the council. So I just want to clarify that, because we haven't had that conversation as a council.
Yeah. Well, typically, every year at a retreat, this is a topic that comes up. Council members are appointed, and later on this evening you have a discussion, but you are appointed to some things. In this case, Councilman Weinsdorf is appointed as a rep of the town Flood District 9. So in essence, he is representing the council. However, the council can choose to have additional discussions, provide perhaps direction to the representative they choose. That is something that we always discuss at the retreat, and the retreat would be coming up in March, and that'd be another topic of discussion for the council to talk about, if that's a policy that you want to continue, or you want to do something different.
Well, I think I just want to add one thing, and then I'll stop, is that all of us are representative on certain boards and commissions, and we have certain leeway on those boards and commissions to represent the town. But there are certain things, for example, I sit on Marin Clean Energy, where I don't have the authority to bind the town to pay for certain things. And so I guess I just want to be clear that David has expressed his views, I respect that, but I'm not accepting all aspects of this report, so I don't want to be told later that I have approved this.
No, I think a report is strictly that.
Okay.
Maybe we could use a different word, receive a report. Perhaps that would have been better than accept.
That's typically what I've done when I've been on other boards.
And it's also the situation with the Ross Valley Healthy Community Collaborative. It's merely a report that we're accepting. Doesn't mean we don't have further discussion, potential disagreement. I've just, we heard the gentleman, Mr. O'Neal, on the Ross Valley Charter, so it's a similar kind of situation where you're representing, and you're a member of a committee as appointed by council to serve on that committee, and we absolutely have to have this conversation, because we serve on many committees.
But you realize, Mayor, that decisions are made, at times even before any of us were here, but in this case, before any of you were here, in which this council joined with the other communities in the Ross Valley to establish a process. That process spent tax or fee money and resulted in a study that was adopted by the county with the advice of the advisory board. That is now the binding policy of this town. We would certainly not accept San Onofre or Ross or Loxbury going on their merry path because new council members came in. Government is about continuity, and once down that path, no, I...
David, I want to disagree with you. This council never voted for Lefty Gomez. This council approved the flood fee and the process, but even Supervisor Rice has said there are other options potentially. So we are not at the point where this council has agreed to Lefty Gomez in every aspect of it.
You're wrong.
I disagree.
Supervisor Rice, trust me, I spend a significant amount of time with Supervisor Rice dealing with this.
Well, I respectfully disagree, and we should probably cut this off.
You can't, but I want to tell you, you can't just leave an incorrect statement on the table.
There is no EIR for Lefty Gomez. It is not a done deal.
That's not the issue. The path has been established. Now, should an EIR come forward, and it's established for any number of reasons, that's why you go through CEQA NIPA, is you find that the project is not acceptable under federal and state law, then hold it.
I disagree, David.
Don't cut me off. Be respectful. I'm talking. When you go through the process, you might find, under federal and state law, that you can't go forward with the project. That is an entirely different situation, and you assume that risk under law. However, as a policy basis, this council has established and accepted the path that the advisory board, and by extension, the county, has marched down. And I'll leave it, I will leave it at that.
Okay, I respectfully disagree. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Weinsdorf, I'm very respectful of all efforts to find and promote strategies that mitigate flooding in our area. I support the project to increase holding capacity at Phoenix Lake. I support channel improvement projects such as bridge replacements, enlargement of culverts, and removal of debris and concrete obstructions from our creeks. I would support system-wide water retention strategies and green infrastructure policy. I would support spending our flood fee tax funds on floodproofing solutions, such as the installation of floodgates on commercial and residential properties, and codes that would allow for the raising of homes in flood-prone areas beyond their current height limit. However, I am opposed to a stormwater detention basin at White Hill School, Lefty Gomez Field, and Community Park. If the Lefty Gomez Field Detention Basin is built at White Hill School, over 1,000 students and residents' lives stand to be disrupted for a massive two-year construction project and forevermore, every time it's used for flooding, subsequent cleanup, rebuilding, replanting, and maintenance. Furthermore, stormwater detention basins pose inherent risks, including drowning and exposure to hazardous debris. This is not about me being alarmist. According to experts, including the American Society of Civil Engineers, there are a number of detention basin risk factors related to proximity to neighborhoods, parks, and schools. In the Ross Valley Flood Control Board's November 15 Flow Reduction Study Basin Site Criteria on Page 121 under Section D, Gain Public Acceptance, the Lefty Gomez Field Basin Site received a low score for public safety for operation near schools/park. On the same page of that same study, the Lefty Gomez Field Basin Site scored medium under potential to trap people.
I look forward to hearing answers to the questions that we have already submitted at the Flood Board meeting in December, at tomorrow's community meeting at White Hill Middle School at 7:00 p.m. in Building 400. Thank you.
Mayor, we don't have to wait. In your packet, the county has put together the first set of responses to questions. Not all of them, I'm sure, but they took the first set of them, and within the time period that they could and the expertise that they could amass, they began the process of responding to questions. I know what you may say next, and I want to assure you that as more questions arise, or as more specificity can be provided, this is an iterative document in which it will be consistently updated over time to ensure that questions are even more explicitly responded to.
That would be quite helpful. Thank you.
The other thing...
David, just real quick, has the public received this? Is it on the website at this point?
On Tuesday, or it was last night, it went up on the website last night, and is available to the public.
Under FAQs on the Marin Watershed's website, under the Lefty Gomez.
And can I just add, I left a copy for the public in the lobby with the packet called Supplement in an orange folder.
Do we have more public comment?
Yes.
Okay.
Just one comment about the distribution of the information. Superintendent Bagley committed to forward this information about the meeting to all Ross Valley parents, and it never happened, so...
I'll say one thing, Superintendent Bagley actually, it's got to be about a month ago, maybe, he was asked about the question of dislocation, what would happen over the period of time, and we don't know how long it would take to construct this, let's go for the two-year period.
I'm talking about the information about the meeting, tomorrow's meeting. He said he would distribute the information about the meeting, the announcement, to all Ross Valley parents.
Okay.
And he never did. So basically, we have all the parents that obviously are interested, what's going to happen there, and a lot of them just don't know about it.
Well, Superintendent, I can't speak to Superintendent Bagley, but I can tell you that we and the county and, you know, have, you know, widely distributed this, including mailings. So it has gone out to a significant number. You can always get a larger crowd, and you can always do better outreach, but I can't speak to Superintendent Bagley. But since you raised him, I thought it's interesting with regard to Suzuki's comment. One of the things that he informed us about is that, in the event this goes forward, the school would take extraordinary measures to make sure that the playing fields and the recreation, the opportunities, would not be diminished during the construction period, and that they would do what was necessary to identify additional sites for the kids to play. So that was, you know, one of the particular concerns, you know, what would happen during this particular period. As to the period of, you know, it's such an arcane point, but I think it's important to know that, you know, when we find out that meteorologically there's going to be a flood, and on the very rare occasions when this would be used, I might say that if this detention basin had been in place, when President Carter was in the White House, it would have been used twice so far. The water comes in, the flooding danger abates, the weather changes, we slowly release the water after, whether it's hours or a day or two later, and then we begin the process that would not take all that long to put the fields back into order. Because remember, we're not simply building up a berm, we're also improving the rather substandard field that is there, so it is a much better drained facility, even during times when it is being used, as always, for a recreational purpose.
So anyway, we are aware about tomorrow's meeting, and we're looking forward to questions and answers, and the reason we are here today is the report that Mr. Weinsdorf submitted to the council members. So according to the November 2015 Ross Valley Flow Reduction Study Report, Lefty Gomez Field was not identified as highest-ranked location nor the most effective for the flood detention basin. In fact, Deer Park and the former Sunnyside Nursery Basin Sites were ranked higher. Lefty Gomez Field also scored medium-low in public safety. For comparison, here are a few facts about the potential Sunnyside former nursery site. It can hold the same amount of water as Lefty Gomez Field if left is built 16 feet deep. It covers the same drainage area of the watershed. It will not disturb the community or school. It will not shrink or sink our park or playgrounds. It will not require immediate cleanup. It will not alienate the community. It will have broad public support. It will not deteriorate the reputation of Ross Valley School District. There is an upfront expense to acquire the land, but it would be the best spend of money in the capital improvement plan. Apparently, in 2015, the county held two community meetings to discuss the White Hill School Lefty Gomez Field and Loma Alta proposed detention basins. Neither we, nor our Glen Drive, nor Shamron Court neighbors, nor their HOAs, were notified of these meetings. Once we learned that this project was already nearly grant-ready, we attended the floodboard meetings. We were given two minutes to comment on a project with undisclosed details. We asked questions. Instead of answers, we were given Tom McIner's rolling eyes. We studied the reports in details. We asked questions. Instead of answers, we were made out to be selfish and ill-informed. Mr. Weinsdorf, large bodies of water within proximity of schools are safety hazards, regardless of the design. Is this misinformation? Do we need to keep it quiet?
Okay, let's just, just a few minutes, Renee. Let me just address a few things. First of all, you're well aware that the Sunnyside property, unlike Lefty Gomez, is private property, and it's not about the cost of buying it, although that has to fit into a limited budget. The issue is, it's private property, and we are not going to take it by eminent domain. If you review our reintroduction into Flood Zone 9, it specifically says that we will not take property by eminent domain, so that is off the table. Interestingly, and I think appropriately, in matters of real estate acquisition, the members of the Flood Zone 9 are not apprised of where we are in time and space on that. We could not, because it would artificially and potentially adversely affect the purchase price of the property. So what I can tell you is that if it was available today, I imagine we'd be having a conversation about having it used as a flood detention basin today. But it apparently is not today. And from what I understand, it's private property owned by a private trust with a family, and I think I mentioned this last night at the HOA meeting. Like most loving families, there are often difficulties across the Thanksgiving table. And from what I understand, there are some difficulties across the Thanksgiving table of that property. So as we sit here today, with flood danger ever at our heels in the wintertime, it's not as if that was waiting at an either-or. I would also say to you that, from what I understand, and this should come up tomorrow night, raise the issue if you will, the holding capacity of Lefty Gomez is greater, from my understanding, is greater.
Not according to the report.
Wait, let's ask tomorrow, because after all, things change. Ask tomorrow whether they, whether they're equivalent. I'd be interested to know, because after all, I am also aware that perhaps not all of the Sunnyside property might be available. So you're talking about some moving, some moving pieces here. Let me also address the prior meeting that we had. I think Flood Zone 9, over time, is going to get better in its abilities to inform the public of things. They did a massive outreach this past time. The other time, I do know that some of your HOA members were at that prior meeting, but that's never an excuse for not having maximum public outreach. I think it was John in the last meeting, or Barbara, who raised the issue of having these meetings broadcast for folks, either on a delay or live, and we will do that. We've discussed it, and we'll go forward and expend, you know, the funds to have good folks come and tape it. We hold most of our meetings in San Anselmo, and they have the capacity to have the meetings broadcast. So on some of the issues, we're going to move forward on better public participation. Welcome your thoughts on this, and bring these questions forward. There will be the technical staff will be available to answer the questions tomorrow. So on this equivalent-
I will.
Feel free to do so. But let me, let me go one step further. As, you know, I'm getting the heat. I get this. You should feel free, not just during the, you know, what do we have, five, six advisory board meetings every year, and a couple of these extra meetings that we have with HOAs and in the communities. I work for you. You got questions? Send email. Send me an email. I'll get you an answer from the technical staff, so that you're living in the real time of questions and answers, as staff is living in the real time of questions and answers. There is, this is a developing process of engineering, and we learn more as we go forward. The public only visits with us on set times, a couple of times a year. Send me an email, Suzuki, send me an email, or Betty, at the invitation was, anytime you want. Sit down with me, Supervisor Rice, we'll bring some technical people, and we'll apprise you of even greater detail. This is a nice give and take, but this is a very stilted reality. If you want to sit down for a couple of hours and talk about the stuff, we're happy to visit you anywhere you want to meet. Feel free.
The information about Sunnyside, actually, in the last floodboard meeting, was different than you're presenting here right now.
That meeting was over six weeks ago.
So I'm sorry, I'm going to interrupt because we have more public comment about this item, so we don't just get a conversation going on here. Gary.
Thank you. Gary Roth, live in town, know most of you, I think. Came to speak about the proposed White Hill Basin and respond, not as a, not in a way that is judging at this point, but I want to, A, thank David for so many years of bird dogging this and understanding it in the depth that it needs to be understood. I was involved in early meetings and have a pretty good understanding of the overall concept and some of the volumes of water that we're dealing with, and some of the, there are these, the push to say no right off the bat was my gut as well. It was, that's been my backyard. I've been raking and weeding and filling potholes in that field for a quarter of my life, I just realized that sitting back there, with the local leagues, and it's been my backyard. I played soccer and baseball there when I was a kid, so I have a deep emotional connection to it and a deeply negative reaction to the fact that that is the solution to our flood problems. With that said, I don't think that a no campaign does us any good. I also don't think that giving over to a purely engineered solution does us any good, because it makes me shudder to think of a two-to-one slope down 17 feet to a field that is significantly smaller. The concerns outlined by the Glen Drive group all have merit. The concerns of the engineers have merit. The concerns of our town have merit. We, why would, we can all agree, we don't want town to flood. Let's start with that. Marrying the concerns of safe routes and safety and, give me a few others, with the engineering concerns, there is a word for it, and David, you've used it a couple of times, it's called design, and this could be, if given the right design treatment with a participatory design process, could be an iconic place as the nexus of low-impact design issues throughout the Ross Valley and the headwaters of Ross Valley. But it should not, as a project, stand alone in trying to protect all of the communities downstream. It can't do that. It becomes a matter of scale. And so I think as a community, we have to weigh in on it from a matter of scale, and also to think about it from what risk are we willing, what are the risks we're willing to take? And at what point does the scale and the risk mitigation come together? And all of that, to me, is a design process. And at the end of the day, if those sloping banks are filled with native plants and built-in bleachers, and there's a beautiful new set of sports fields there, and maybe it's not 17 feet deep, and maybe it's nine feet deep, and maybe we use it every 25 years instead of every 50 years, we've accomplished something. We've got a great new facility, and we've mitigated the risk, and maybe some other things can get spread out. But I'm hoping that rather than start from a no, we can go to this participatory design process, starting tomorrow night, and address these issues. Because I fail to see how a detention basin that fills up once every 25 years is any less safe than our town flooding. I don't, I don't, I don't know where that comes from. I think a lot of the comparisons from the safety perspective that I'm seeing are from detention basins that you might typically find at a, you know, at a Stop &amp; Shop, or someplace where they've been forced to put in a flood retention facility, and they have minimal space, and they have steep sloping sides. When I actually read through the, when I read through the reports of that, what I've seen is, what's been designed with gently sloping sides is actually a way to, a way to deal with that, and so.
I'm very sorry to cut you off, but we have to, but thank you so, so much. Did you not already speak?
What?
Go ahead.
My name's Sierra. I think I have the solution to all this, and it's really simple. It'll take a little bit of engineering, but we're, we've got engineers, we've got know-how. Why don't we take the cell towers and focus them on the water and evaporate the water so that it, we can just get rid of it that way, so that it doesn't run downstream? Okay, fine. You know, there's a lot of unknowns in terms of the weather. We don't know if it's going to be a drought or a flood, but what we do know is that Greenland has kind of melted. There's a lot of water coming. The sea levels have and are rising, and whether it's 20 years, or 50 years, or five years, or 100 years, are just exactly what things are doing, or even if we had anything to do with it, that's all a matter of debate. But, you know, or is it drought? We do have a lot of impervious pavement. Drake Fields, for example, they're looking at redoing those. That's all impervious. That's all runoff into the creeks. What about, for example, looking at Drake High School and all their fields, and perhaps digging some underground basins underneath the fields? That's an awful lot of water space. But also, do we want to go back to grass, for example? Something that at least takes some water, and it slows it down, rather than it all running off into the creeks, because there's a lot of water there? You know, downtown San Anselmo is, it's beautiful, and it's built in a creek bed. It's like, what a stupid idea. And it has flooded, it's flooded in the 50s, it's flooded in the 80s, it's flooded in 90s, and it's probably going to continue to flood more often. And I want to say to David, it's like, you know, you said, you know, it's a done deal. It's like, we already planned it, we accounted for it, and there's no such thing as a done deal and accounted for. If people don't like the way something's going, then we can change, and we can change it. It's like, we don't necessarily have to have Diablo Canyon sitting down there on a fault line. It's like, maybe people could have changed that, and then maybe it wasn't such a done deal, and maybe things like that. We are the done deal when they explode in our faces. So it's like, you know, we're a work in process. There's no done deals, and I really advocate for all of us making the best deals we can and not going for the money-as-everything-one and easy. And I'm not really, I'm neither for or against the detention basin at Red Hill. I think there are costs to the community for something that gets used, hopefully not that often, but I've got a sense that it's going to get used a lot more often, and I've also got a sense that it's probably not going to be enough after a certain amount of time, and we shall see. There's engineers and there's artists, and you've heard me say this before, some of us dot our Ts and, or some of us, I don't know what I'm saying, some of us cross our Ts and dot our Is, and some of us cross our Is and drink our Ts, and we need all of them.
Well, let's hope that all the artists and the engineers come together to have a great conversation. No more public comment?
I have a-
Okay. Peter.
Just briefly comment, and I'd like to also join in with Barbara, Barbara's comment that, you know, this body has not, you know, approved this, or the policy of going forward. You know, the Flood District was created in an election, which was very controversial about 10 years ago. If they actually counted all the votes, it would have actually been defeated by a fairly narrow margin, but due to some technical issues in the balloting, those votes were discarded. It went to the Supreme Court. You know, it's, it's a, it's a difficult process to try to decide how to deal with these flood issues. Memorial Park was not popular, was controversial. The detriments are very clear, especially with Lefty Gomez Field, so I'm also the alternate to the advisory board, and I've just started really digging into this because the focus has now shifted. I am curious to really see the engineering and hydrology reports to, that make the case for the advocacy of the Flood District, so I'm hoping to, for Lefty Field. So I'm hoping to learn more tomorrow and just generally get more information, because I just haven't heard enough to know whether it's, it's worth going forward or what the, what the benefits are, and, but I do want to- But I do want to hear the engineering case for the project. But, you know, we definitely have not weighed in as a town endorsing any of the proposed solutions as such. And I think it's important for this process going forward to have a really careful look at the pros and cons of all the, all the possibilities. And so I'm looking forward to that, to just getting more educated and more information.
Okay, thank you. So moving on, I did notice that there may be a couple of individuals who came in had not heard the initial announcements, that we have pulled the public hearing item, which is number 11, about marijuana cultivation. But we will continue with the item number 12 in the regular agenda following council reports.
Mayor, excuse me, did you want to entertain a motion whether to accept that report from consent?
We don't need any motion. It's just, it was just really receiving a report, so no action is needed.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. So moving forward to council committee reports, starting with Councilmember Wainsoff.
Should we discuss item seven?
Oh.
No, we're doing it.
No, we're going to, we're going to talk about item seven at the end.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks. David?
Sure. On the MCCMC front, a bunch of you went to the dinner a couple of nights ago in Mill Valley. More importantly, from MCC's perspective, I serve on the Ledge Committee, and we met, I guess it was a week ago, Monday. And we were all very interested in what was going to happen with the legislation that the governor signed late this afternoon. And at that time, it became clear to our consultants, or I guess the, the folks that brief us, the analysts that brief us every month or so, brought us up to date with where that was moving. And so I immediately got back to the office, I called Garrett and gave him the what's-up on their thoughts. And it truly came to pass because in short order, the Assembly sent it, and now the governor wisely signed the bill. The other meetings, I went to the HOA meeting, Metta Crest, that was laboriously discussed a few minutes ago. And applicable for flood because that's what I do. I attended the Chamber of Commerce meeting, and they were kind enough to put me on short notice to get on their agenda for about twenty, twenty-five minutes, brought them up to date with where we were on that situation, and to apprise them of the concerns that they didn't need to be reminded of with regard to their businesses, particularly on Bleanus. So with that, those were the major things that I attended.
Thank you. Barbara?
Okay, only a few. The town clerk, or Madam Clerk as we now call her, and I met with Emma Lauder on the pedestrian flags pilot, which I've already spoken about. I attended the Marin Clean Energy Meeting, and also on a Saturday, attended the Marin Telecommunications Agency Strategic Planning Workshop. There hasn't been a strategic plan update, I think there's only been one back in 2008, so it's time to get that going. And Peter also attended as the alternate, but I don't want to steal his thunder. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you. John?
Okay, let me see. I met with the Volunteer Trail Committee, kind of looking at different trails around town. And we, looking to open up another trail. I also, I led a trail walk on Saturday, which was, you know, up the Roca Steps on the north side of town, and went up, and then we, since it was a beautiful day, we went up and did a loop around in the wall property. And it was very enjoyable and educational for everybody, I think. Let me see, I also met with some neighbors next to where the trail that we are thinking about opening up next is. I went to the MCCMC meeting. I attended a Transportation Authority of Marin meeting. And that's it. And I guess, yeah.
Okay. Thanks, John. Peter?
Thank you, Mayor. Let's see, I attended the Marin County Councils and Mayors and council members as well in Mill Valley. Had a very interesting speaker talking about polling nationally and in California. The good news is that while people have given Congress the lowest approval rating ever in the history of polls, people generally feel pretty favorable about local government. So that's, that's encouraging to hear. I attended a couple meetings on behalf of the Zero Waste Subcommittee, and pleased to report that due in part to the drop in fuel prices, we'll be getting a little bit of money back compared to what we were projecting our rates to be. So we'll be getting a little bit of a rate reduction sometime in the coming months, so that's good news. I attended the Marin Telecommunications Committee, the Strategic Planning Meeting, and I serve as the alternate to that. That was very informative, just to kind of get an update on what's going on with telecommunications and how the franchise agreement works and so forth. And one of the things that I propose, which I'd really like to look at in the coming months, is to see the possibility, viability of perhaps creating through the agency a public utility that could provide fiber optic broadband coverage for the jurisdiction. And that'd be a very interesting possibilities to look into. And so I hope to be reporting back to that at some time in the future. And that's, that's about it.
Thank you. Mine is long, I will try to be as brief in my length as possible here. Attended a Safe Roots to Schools Task Force meeting to review all of the projects and issues with public works and law enforcement and how people are moving about getting kids to school safely. I attended a fabulous evening entitled Millennials Speak Out. We had an opportunity to peek into the lives of this generation and how they define themselves and what they, what their expression of activism is. It's a hopeful time for young enthusiastic, passionate activists around climate change. And it was a treat to understand that you can build movements, you can communicate respectfully with both your allies and your adversaries, and they modeled that beautifully. Attended a school board meeting, and at that board meeting, the Ross Valley School Board voted to discontinue the MAP program effective at the end of this year, fifteen, sixteen school year. And the, the reason being that there was state approval of the Ross Valley Charter. Many details going forward, multiple school board meetings coming up and available for everyone's participation should you choose to, to want to learn more about what's going on with the Ross Valley Charter and the Ross Valley School District. We conducted a waste audit, a fabulous waste audit at White Hill Middle School as we prepare to create the comprehensive recycling composting program at White Hill to determine what in the world they are making in terms of waste. And good news is that most of it is recoverable. So the actual landfill is quite minimal, but they need a place to throw it. So we are working hard to get that set up, and it is coming indeed. Attended a screening of a movie called Screenagers through the Ross Valley Healthy Community Collaborative. Speaks to what is happening with our youth when they are glued to their screens and what happens with the brain, what's happening biochemically, and what it's doing to our social structure as we start and continue to lose our kids to screen time. Produced by a local resident of Fairfax, it will be shown everywhere. It premiered at the Fairfax Movie Theater, which the Ross Valley Healthy Community Collaborative rented for the evening, packed houses, and we've had to schedule two more, and they are also sold out. So any young, families of young children, don't start too early. They, they start using their iPhones at one. Go check out that movie. Disaster Council, I'm on the Public Outreach Committee. And to announce, there is a training for something very exciting that's happening, which is a home fire preparedness volunteer training. There will be a event which will take place at Village West here in Fairfax on February, shoot, March nineteenth. And what will happen is those residents of Village West who RSVP will have fire department and Red Cross volunteers come to their door, install new smoke detectors, all free of charge, give them information about home preparedness in case of fire, and some of the information that we are generating through our Citizen Outreach Committee. We're lobbying for more free smoke detectors so that we can open it up to other multifamily apartment complexes in areas of town. But on March nineteenth, that will happen. The training for volunteers is March fifteenth. You can get all this information, we will post it on the website, and a lot of training is going on.
Mayor?
Yes.
I just want to mention that I had kind of coordinated that when I was part of the countywide public disaster because the Red Cross was part of that, and they talked about it. And I pushed for more at that time, continued to try pushing, but they have a pretty big area that they serve, so we were fortunate to get Village West. But we may be able to get them to do at least another apartment complex.
Excellent, thank you. And then the three, three zero-waste meetings to talk about the contract and to work with some of the services that we are, that are provided to us and bump up some of the service levels. You will hear more about what those services are. And several Ross Valley Healthy Community Collaborative Core, Core meetings to plan the upcoming spring semester in educating parents and the community. Thank you. Okay, moving on. Take a break?
Should we have the town manager first?
Let's hear from the town manager, and then let's take a five, seven-minute break.
So only thing I have to report is the weather has cooperated, and we will begin repair of the pavilion roof tomorrow. If everything goes well, we'll be done by the early part of next week, if not sooner.
Just one question. At some point, you informed us that this whole stage here would be fixed. What's your report on that? We've been waiting.
We've encountered some technical difficulties. Actually, what happened is a lot of the vendors weren't working over the holidays. We had some delivery issues on their part, so, well, I think I might have overpromised. But I am hoping by April, we will have the stage remodeled.
Okay, thanks. So we're going to just take a five-minute break.
That concludes the staff report, available for any questions.
Okay, thank you. Anyone, questions of staff? Barbara?
Well, I'm sorry, I forgot the one important thing the town attorney mentioned. If you should modify this ordinance, then it would become, in essence, a first reading. So it would be introduction, way of the first reading, it wouldn't be the second reading. And then we come back to you next month with the second reading.
Barbara?
So, question, Garrett. You and I had worked out language, I mean, number one, I guess, I want to stress that the point-of-sale requirement has been in the code for 15 years. And I find it surprising that the Realtors launched such a campaign to tell us not to do something that was already there. But I guess my question is, we had worked out some language that changed that section slightly, and maybe you could read what that would say, which in my mind, I think there may be some other options out there, but in my mind, I don't think that's requiring the Realtor to sign off, but maybe you could read the language that we worked out.
Okay. So this has to do with Section 17.132.040. And I'm just going to go to the part that says, it would go, "Whose rated water usage as scope toilets/water closets whose rated water usage exceeds 1.28 gallons per flush replaced with water-conservating toilets should now exceed 1.28 gallons per flush or as required by the CPC as amended and adopted by town council." Here's where the change is. No later than 60 days after the sale or transfer of property. So no later than 60 days after replaces the words prior to, which is in the current code.
So what that does is takes off the specific point-of-sale requirement. I do want to mention, when I sold my mother's condominium in Orange County, there was a requirement of point-of-sale that it had to be changed out at the point-of-sale. And a toilet was, I mean, it wasn't, we weren't happy about it, but it was an easy thing to do within the timing. So I don't find this to be very onerous, but again, I'm not a Realtor. But to me, the language we've worked out allows the flexibility for any sort of situation where a buyer comes in, does an inspection, finds something that isn't quite right, and then makes a deal with the seller. Either the buyer does it, or the seller does it, or they're given some money. And so I'm not sure why this particular language doesn't help, but also serve the purpose of staying with the water conservation and staying with the current code. And I guess my question is, why does that complicate a sale?
I think it'd probably be appropriate, I believe there's a representative from the Marin Association of Realtors that could perhaps answer that question, but you might wait until there's additional council questions and open a public comment.
And then I have one more question. One of the things I found was in the current code, that for any building improvements as of July 1, 2014, so this is in Title 24, any building improvements you have to change out to meet the current standards. And then on or before January 1, 2017, non-compliant plumbing fixtures in any single-family residential property shall be replaced by the property owner with water conservation plumbing fixtures, which means, I could be sitting there in my house today, not selling it, not doing anything, and by January, I better change those non-compliant fixtures. So it's coming in a variety of ways. And I think we, as a council, are for water conservation. I think, you know, so it troubles me that we're looking at rolling this back. I understand that we could work out some alternate language that may be more suitable, but still stay with, you know, what we're trying to achieve. So I just wanted to make that point.
Okay, thanks. Anyone else, questions?
Yeah, Garrett, just following up on your suggested language about...
So can I, I'm so sorry to interrupt, but I'm just thinking that our time right now would be more for questions, given that I know we have public comment, before we bring it back and then make our own comments, if it's, you need clarification or something.
Garrett, are you, your suggestion that the switchover happened within 60 days of the transfer, would there be some kind of follow-up inspection by the building department to make sure that that happens, or some kind of certification?
Actually, what we would do is we'd give them the same certification form. We give contractors and owners now with any building permit, and so they would just need to fill it out and send it in, that they meet the standards.
There wouldn't be any...
There would be no inspection unless they wanted one.
Uh huh, okay.
Okay, any others?
I don't think you're going to be able to answer this. In days of yore, not too long ago, toilets were even more wasteful than they probably are now. And then we moved to 1.6. How long do you think it would take without any, you know where I'm going with this? Okay, go ahead.
Well, are you asking how long it would take just for it naturally to happen, just like it does now with the 1.6? That's difficult to say, because at some point, it would be true that only high-efficiency toilets would be available on the market, and you'd have to struggle probably to find something that didn't meet that standard. Mark might be able to answer that better, you know. Now it's not a problem, of course, that's been since 2001, so that's 15 years. It would seem like it could happen over a five-to-seven-year period, if not sooner. But that being said, it's difficult to say. And really, we'd have to, you know, there's, really, we'd have to ask Mark, unless Linda knew. Right. You would have to look at resale reports.
You could estimate that it would happen in the same amount of time it took for the 1.6s to replace, but we still run into toilets that aren't the 1.6, so.
Okay, any other questions? Seeing none, let's go out to public comment.
Hi, all. I'm Dave Smadbeck. I'm a local Realtor here with Cobal Banker, also a member of Marin Association of Realtors, and also its past president. And I was asked to come by today and answer any questions you may have. You've all seen the letter from MAR, I assume? Okay, so I, just a general thing I just want to say is that point-of-sale, we've always been opposed to point-of-sale ordinances because they do interfere in the transaction of a property. It doesn't, in the case of Fairfax, there's about 70 to 90 sales per year, and there's about 2,500 homes. So that'd take about 25 to 30 years to, it's not a real answer to getting the toilets changed out. However, we've successfully, as an industry, we, you know, we disclose these facts to all our buyers and all our sellers, and it does become a point of negotiation. MMWD board member Larry Bragman is here, who's probably going to come up right after me, says he has a good solution for this. What we don't want to see is toilets becoming tied up with a escrow. And that's really the danger. And it doesn't hurt people that are well-heeled, but for people who are selling because they need the money, may not have the money to do those, you know, it may cost $500 to $1,000 to do that transaction, and there are people that can't afford to do that. And a buyer's not going to do it if they don't own the property. It becomes, it becomes a real onerous situation. So, you know, as an industry, we're all for conservation. We think it's a good thing to change from the 1.6 to 1.28, but do it in a way that doesn't interfere in the transaction. That's all we're asking. And I'd be curious to hear what Larry has to say on the issue.
I'm curious to hear what Larry has to say, but I do have a question for you.
Yeah.
So Garrett read the language, which took out the part that specifically talked about point-of-sale that he and I worked out. And that really talks about that no later than 60 days after the sale or transfer of the property, the change-out occurs. So it's not, it doesn't have the words prior to the sale, so that it doesn't hold up the escrow. I guess I'm just, you're not looking at it, so I know it's hard, but does that seem very problematic to you?
On the face of it, it sounds like a decent way to do it. I would certainly love to run it by our people. Just, it won't take long for us to get a determination on that, but it sounds like that would be a good solution.
Yeah, that, to me, sounded like it's not hinging, it's not, you know, stuck on the escrow point, and you work out the details just like you do everything in a sale, and whoever decides to do it, fine, but it's not hanging up the escrow. So maybe one of the things, I'd like to hear what Larry Bragman has to say, because I know he has probably a more elegant solution, but I think one of the things we should probably consider, Garrett, is sending this language as well, so the MAR gets a chance to look at both. But thank you for your...
I do want to say, I really appreciate the council and staff working with MAR to find a good solution for this, and we appreciate that collaboration. Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Thank you. Larry? Good evening.
Hi. And thank you very much for taking this up. We are still under the governor's order to, excuse me, continue to conserve 25% from our 2013 usage. And it is slipping. It's interesting, we, the Water District, did a projection of expected water use over the next 30 years, and in spite of a modest population increase, the prediction is that water use will remain somewhat flat at about 21,000 acre-feet a year, which is a reduction from peak usage about four years ago. And the primary reason for that reduction is efficiency, plumbing efficiency and conservation. So as far as creating water resilience for the county, water security for the county, as banal as, you know, this type of ordinance may be, it actually is a very significant thing that you're doing. And I really appreciate you taking it up and giving it as much consideration as you're giving it. My second point is that just as a general exercise of your municipal authority, this, the resale inspection is really the only time that the municipality can examine and inspect its housing stock. The town really doesn't have a right to go onto property randomly and do inspections unless there's a complaint. And as the town has progressed over the years and building standards have changed, non-conforming uses come and go. The ability of the municipality to actually examine its housing stock, I think, is a significant and important exercise of your power. So that all being said, what I wanted to add to your suggestion about giving additional time, 60 days, is to add some language that I found after scouring some of the ordinances of our sister cities here in Marin County. And I think this is from, this is either from Belvede or Tiburon, I think this is Tiburon. And what they've done, which I think complements what you've done, but it just clarifies it, so that no title company can hold up the escrow, which is really a big inconvenience for everybody. And what it says, and I'll just read it to you, no sale or exchange, and this would, you would insert this in the subsection relating to the toilet change-out. And so what you would add is this language, "No sale or exchange of residential property shall be invalidated solely because of the failure of any person to comply with any provision of this section of this ordinance." I'm inserting that so that you fit it into your section. "Unless such failure is an act or omission, which would be a valid ground for rescission of such sale or exchange in the absence of such section." So what it does is it specifically exempts this section from ever being used by a title company to hold up an escrow. So I mean, in addition to you giving them the additional time after transfer, this complements it by putting it in black and white, that this particular section shall not interfere with the close of escrow. And then the only other suggestion I wanted to make to you guys was on the self-certification. I think it should be done like a fix-it ticket. So instead of it just being checking a box, they should attach a receipt for the purchase of the toilet. So it's like a fix-it ticket. If you don't have your title, or your tire fixed on your car, you bring it, you bring proof of correction, you know, very easily. It would just be a receipt for the purchase of the new fixture, and you're done. And the other thing I just wanted to add, for you and for, I guess, the public, is right now, these fixtures, the Marin Municipal Water District is giving $150 rebate per fixture. So that pretty much pays for the fixture. And so really, the only expense to the homeowner would be paying someone to install or self-installing. And final point, the district did a large change-out in Greenbray, on Greenbray Hill, which is a very old area above Marin General with a lot of older apartments. I'm told we switched out 900 units. And these new high-efficiency toilets, which is, you know, probably the second or third generation, have been doing well. So it's, the technology has been changing, the manufacturing processes have improved, and I would really hope that you guys would consider this, and that this would sort of take care of the concerns of the Realtors, and legally just get this away from their escrow. So thank you. Thank you very much.
Excellent, thanks, Larry. Council questions?
If I may ask you, I mean, you say this is the second or third generation of these low-flow, does the Water District do any monitoring of different brands or manufacturing, you know, quality control? Because, I mean, I voted against this the first time around, after we heard some testimony from somebody who had changed out a whole bunch of toilets to the, these low-flow ones. And then they were, he found his tenants were having to flush them two and three times to make them work, so he's using a lot more water. Having had that experience myself, and had to, in, I guess it was '96, when I bought my house and changed it from a 3.5 to a 1.6, and then to another 1.6, and then to a third 1.6 that was a commercial toilet, it was the only one that I could get to work, you know, it was an expensive and laborious process, but there were so many bad-working toilets out there that you would have to flush four times to get them to work.
So I would just say, there is a particular brand that the District Conservation Director, Dan Carney, has endorsed. We, in the direct change-out, in other words, the district will actually pay for a change-out, which may be the solution ultimately, but that's a question of getting the grant money together to do that. But there is, there are a few brands that they've vetted, that they've found to be fairly problem-free. So that's the report I'm getting from Greenbray, is that that change-out, which was, you know, almost 1,000 units, has gone smoothly. And I would just add, a lot of times, the trouble with the flushing mechanism, or the efficiency of it, has more to do with water pressure in your particular area than it does with the actual fixture. So, you know, I'm not sure whether all the blame can be laid on the fixture, but, you know, I do understand the reputation that precedes it. But I do think things are improving.
Yeah.
And will continue to improve. And collectively, it will make a big impact for our community. So I really do hope you guys stay on the path.
Well, I mean, I think it's, the intention is very good, and especially the double, the two-pronged approach that you've suggested in terms of delaying the...
We already worked out that language.
...certification and your language there is terrific.
It's a belt and suspenders.
Yeah, belt and suspenders is good, but I think, especially if there's several brands that have been vetted, that information would be extremely valuable, that we could include along with the requirement language, you know, and just say...
Well, we could, we could...
Kind of to guide people, obviously, you can't stop somebody from...
I would be happy to provide Linda or whoever with the rebate, some kind of a flyer on the rebate, so people get that when they're coming in to do this. And then also some kind of informational flyer, which would give you the brand that's, that have been used, or the brands that are being used. So I, I'll just, I'd be happy to do that.
That would be great. Thank you.
Okay.
Question, Larry, just a quick question. So I think that what I'm hearing is, we take Larry's language, which protects making sure the title companies will not use this as an excuse. We also take the language that Garrett, you and I worked out, and put that together and discuss that with MAR. And, okay, so I think that's, to me, that's very helpful, but I know there are other questions. I just wanted to make sure I understood that.
Yeah. And again, I would also hope that as far as the self-reporting, you would make it a fix-it ticket, so there would be some proof of correction.
I think that, you know, I have a copy of the self-certification in front of me, and I think that would be in a good addition, that we should discuss administratively, because I know when I worked at the Air District, and we had certain self-certifications, we had to have attachments.
Yeah.
So that it just backed it up. And even if you buy it at the takeaway station, you still have to pay $5 or something for something. So you would always have some sort of a receipt. And if you didn't, I suppose you could write something that you got it from someone, someone gave it to you, or something like that. But it seems like that would be a nice add-on, it would make it more secure. But Garrett, so can you get, I know there are other council members, but can you get the language from Larry, and maybe provide it to me, so I can see it together?
Sure, but I think I need some council direction, if you're thinking, we wouldn't do the second reading, we do a next one.
Right, because we'd be going back to a first reading. So any, no, I'm just asking you.
Yeah, so the suggestion...
Okay, so you guys would modify with our recommendations and the language that we choose to include, and then bring it back for a first reading.
Yeah, so what we would do is, we would come up...
I understand.
We would come up some language, we run it by MAR, which actually I did, but I didn't run the invalidation language by them, and then come back to you with a first reading at your next meeting.
Okay.
But I guess, are you...
No, I'm going to ask council if anyone else has anything they'd like to say.
Thank you.
Thank you, Larry, very much.
I had a quick question for Larry. The rebates that MMWD is offering, are those on your website?
They probably are. I can't say the website's the most user-friendly of websites, but it's there if you look, yeah.
I was just suggesting it might be good for our town website to...
To link to it.
To link to that and mention that, because, you know, it certainly helps, helps our citizens, too, and...
I will send the link to Garrett, along with that language that I just recited to you, so you'll be able to drill down without having to navigate the website.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, anyone else, before we send this back to, back to Garrett? More public comment? Okay.
Hi, my name's Todd. My name's Todd Greenberg, and I've recently, in the last few months, had to go through escrow here. And I would encourage you to talk more with a variety of Realtors, not just about this issue, but anything else that might handicap escrow. And I would question whether the recommendation that was just here to use the language that might be appearing in other cities even really makes a difference, because it's not the title company that wants to hold something up, it's the buyer that hasn't been properly advised of numerous issues, as I just experienced. So the title company wants to process the transaction and move forward and guarantee good title, and follow people's directions, but the transaction has a life of its own. And it involves all kinds of legal issues when there isn't proper disclosure or need for compliance. And I think, given my experience not addressing any of the other issues, really puts the brakes on a transaction and makes for a tougher business decision for all parties involved. So I would encourage you not to, even though I'm for water conservation, to not make this or some other issue part of the close of a transaction. That's all.
Thank you so much. Okay, three minutes, everyone.
How about 90 seconds?
That would be great.
I'm all for water conservation, but I think there's an awful lot of waste built into replacing a lot of fairly new toilets for, what are the new ones, 1.2, 1.75? I don't know about other folks, but it's like, you know, buckets and other things, and not flushing. And it's like, I mean, just letting crap build up, or pee build up in a toilet for a while saves an awful lot of water. And just replacing fairly new toilets is just a waste. It just is. It's like, it's not achieving all that much. If you go into the energy use, being used to create and change all these things, I don't think it's a net gain.
Thanks, Garrett. Okay, so we need to...
I'll make a motion?
Yeah.
So I would make a motion that we would incorporate the language about 60 days that you read out, Garrett, as well as the language from Larry Bragman, and incorporate that, and share that with MAR, and bring that back for a first reading. And also, I guess, as a side note, take a look at the self-certification form and see if we should add receipts. But that's a side note, I don't think that's specific to the ordinance.
I would second that with another additional side note that's not specific to the ordinance, but of providing information on effective toilets.
Okay, so you have all that? We have a motion caller, and a second read, and all of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion passes. Thank you. Okay, moving on. And thank you, Linda, for two meetings' worth of patience, although it is only 9:30.
I'm learning a lot.
You could hang out a little bit longer. Item number, no, help me, because I'm lost here.
Are we moving?
Item number 13, we've moved to be the next item, and then continuing with 12, and then back to the regular order. So Garrett, or Jim, hi, Jim.
Or Linda.
Or Linda. Could you please give us a staffer point?
At the November 4 council meeting, a resident raised the concept of enlarging the living space of a legal non-conforming residential second unit. And staff suggested that the council agendize a discussion of the legal non-conforming section for a future meeting. You were supposed to hear it at your last meeting, but it got too late, so you continued it. The town code states that it is the intent of the non-conforming use section of the town code to limit the number and the extent of non-conforming uses by prohibiting their enlargement and their re-establishment after abandonment, and by prohibiting the alteration of the structures they occupy and their restoration after destruction. Under the code, the owners can perform cosmetic upgrades, they can do safety improvements, such as foundation earthquake retrofitting, but they can't expand or alter the properties to increase the discrepancy between the existing conditions and the current zoning standards. Prior to adoption of the ordinance, expansion of homes in the hillside areas of Fairfax occurred on steep sites that are accessed by severely substandard roads, and in areas where many homes have little or no parking, they were built as summer cottages. The homes did not meet current zoning standards, and the expansions were exacerbating the situation by allowing larger units without the required parking or roadway safety improvements. The town code does set forth a method to legalize expansion of non-conforming properties, the properties can... forth a method to legalize expansion of non-conforming properties. The properties can expand if they're able to bring the site into compliance with the current regulations and/or if they can make a case in front of the planning commission, and the planning commission can make findings for why an exception should be granted to the conditions. The resident who requested that the council consider this policy or revisit it has a legal non-conforming property developed with a single-family residence and a one-bedroom second-unit apartment. His contention is that the council should allow expansions of these legal non-conforming second units since they are a form, a form of affordable housing. So while second units are a form of affordable housing in Fairfax, permitting the expansion of these units as a method to increase affordable housing would not be the recommended approach. The expansion or improvements could have impacts on the neighborhoods and the general public that are not addressed or at least considered in the approval process, such as parking, emergency response difficulties, fire safety, the lack of adequate fire safety improvements can all be impacted by allowing enlargement of these legal non-conforming units. An alternative approach would be to encourage the legalization of these non-conforming existing second units, which would comply with the goals and policies of the Fairfax general plan. Legalization of existing non-conforming units could be encouraged by, in several ways, by reducing application fees, streamlining the application process, and perhaps by relaxing parking regulations. And the staff's anticipating that the planning commission will begin consideration of ordinances that might accomplish these goals in the spring. And so that would conclude our report.
Okay, thank you, Linda. Any questions for Linda?
If I said to you, why not approach it through the variance process, your head would spin around on a, on a needle.
Well, that's the way, that's the way the code reads now.
Right.
That they can
Come in and do it case by case by case.
Right.
And that would put you in the, in unenviable position of them having to justify to number two, three, and four, why number one is not just like theirs.
Well, I will just say that Fairfax, every neighborhood's unique. And so I, I know that the variance process is onerous, but I think it actually is beneficial because it gives a public forum for neighbors to give input and for the applicant to express their, their point of view.
So you like it the way it is or the way it could be with the idea of bringing things in from the cold and making them conformant?
Right. And if, and if the community, you know, discusses it and wants to decrease parking, and everyone agrees that that's the way they should go, then there's no problem with that. You just change your, your parking regulations.
But it's often not so much parking as onerous as it is sprinklers, things like that.
It's both, all of those things, all of the above. You know, anything that, anything that adds cost to legalizing it is onerous for some people. So, yeah.
Thanks, Linda.
So Linda, does that mean things like height or things like setbacks or things like space between the structures that I was looking at? How would you fix those things in order to bring them into compliance?
Well, they would either have, so, so the, so it'll, if it, the way it works now, it goes back to the commission. They talk about all the items. If there's something that someone could, for a reasonable cost, improve, like, I'm trying to think of an example, you know, maybe, maybe there's a bathroom. I have one where there's a bathroom that was, pops out towards a property into a setback. Well, if they're doing a remodel of the whole unit, maybe that's the time for that bathroom to be relocated out of the setback, right? But if there really is no way to comply, that's why they, they request the variance from the planning commission. The planning commission reviews it. If they can make the findings that there's no real way to comply, they can grant the exception. Same with the parking. If, if they feel, you know, let's say you had a, an existing second unit that didn't meet certain building codes because of size, and they wanted to make it bigger, and that would bring them into compliance with the building code but wouldn't necessarily make the unit too large, that might be a reason for the planning commission to grant a variance to allow an expansion of an existing second unit, right? So every case is really, really unique. We don't have any cookie cutter subdivisions and improvements in Fairfax.
So Garrett, the reason we're here is because the planning commission doesn't just begin things on their own like this. They would need direction from the council to do so.
So I think the issue came up because the, the resident had, had a concern and really, they hadn't really gone through the process, but we indicated that, well, why don't we discuss the overall concept with the council? So you would know what the position is as it comes to legal non-conforming uses. And then directing the planning commission to go ahead and start that process could make it that legalizing second units becomes easier with amnesty ordinance and addressing some different concerns. And so that applicant can go through that process, and if they're not satisfied, then they could appeal or ask for variances or, or whatever. But there's the process that you need to go through.
And how would this impact our arena numbers?
Well, second units, we do count some second units toward our numbers. So second units would help a lot. We count 16?
Yes.
Yeah, so we estimate 16 second units we brought in over the next eight-year period or seven-year period.
So, so there is a process for someone who has a legal non-conforming unit to try to work through the planning commission to get approval for certain aspects of that. And the planning commission could decide to precedential in some areas, some areas they could allow. So I think what I see before us, if I'm correct, is that we had a resident come and bring these issues to us directly rather than going through the planning commission on a case-by-case basis. So the question we have before us, if I'm correct, because I had to read this several times, even having sat on the planning commission, it would, I was a little perplexed, is there's a case-by-case process that everybody can try and may not work and may be expensive. Or we already say that we want to create an amnesty ordinance for second units that might not apply in this particular case, and we already say that we want to update our second unit ordinance, right? So that's, what we're being asked is, I mean, there's the case-by-case process, which the council isn't in a position to say, okay, for one, just because they happen to come here. But we could direct you to start working on those other ordinances so that in essence, potentially, this one might fit.
Right. And I think, I think the commission is working towards that anyway. They're already talking about trying to decrease parking requirements for second units. So it's just, do you want to direct the commission to make this a priority? You know, they have their own priority list.
Yeah, that's what, and let me ask you one more question, is that the way I read the staff report, it looked like it was talking about two separate ordinances. And one question I have is, maybe it's because they are too separate now, is that would there be a way of working on the second unit ordinance and at the same time creating the amnesty ordinance, bring others in from the cold, and doing it in one ordinance? Or does it have to be too separate?
Well, I think it all depends on if you want to make the amnesty permanent or if it's going to be a temporary amnesty program.
Okay, so there's
You know what I'm saying? The past ones have been temporary.
Okay, so there's no way to do it in one ordinance where you have a separate thing for the amnesty part?
Garrett's saying yes. I think it's written that way now, actually.
Right. It's in the same chapter.
So I guess my thoughts are this, is that the way I was reading this sounded like it was two separate processes for amnesty and the second unit ordinance. And my feeling was it would be great if we could prioritize doing those as soon as reasonably possible in one fell swoop rather than doing them separately. And then we have a more flexible process, potentially. But, but you're saying, yes, it would be done as one action.
Or one ordinance now.
Yeah, it's in one chapter now, so we could do both at the same time.
Which seems to me to make more sense because you'd be talking about second units and do it all at once versus
I think that's probably what we would end up doing.
Okay, so that's what I wanted to understand because I was kind of confused. Okay, thank you.
Okay, John?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I guess this is also, I think, before us because you were kind of checking in on policy. And I think it, the policy of, you know, bringing non-conforming uses in and, and second units in from the cold and trying to make things updated and legalized is one set of policies. And then another one is we have a housing crisis in many ways, and we're looking at junior second units as another place on this agenda. Yeah, because in essence, some of these goals compete with these other policy goals that we have definitely expressed as a council, interest in, you know, bringing second units in from the cold and encouraging junior second units just to deal with some of our housing crisis that's around here. And I guess that was just a point that I wanted to make in general, you know, and I think it would be helpful to, you know, and perhaps the planning commission is doing this, to look at the comprehensive list of reasons of what are the impediments to people legalizing second units right now. I mean, cost is obviously a big one, and some of those costs are not really controllable by us in that, you know, PG&E and the sewer district are charging extra hookup fees for, in essence, something that was already there. I know decades ago, when I lived in Berkeley, I lived in a cottage, and there was one water meter that served the house and the cottage, and we just split the water bill. And, you know, obviously, I mean, I think that's probably something that the water district, I think Larry's left the room here, but, but those types of things are, you know, there's, there's different jurisdictions that have that, but perhaps we as a council can chime in, you know, in terms of those policies taken by other districts. Because really, when I looked at the, the last case that was in front of us here, I had to recuse on, but I certainly read all the materials. I mean, it seemed like most of the, the costs associated with legalizing a second unit there, which the applicants definitely wanted to do, but they just couldn't afford it. I mean, it was going to cost them $50,000. And they didn't have that money, and so we don't have a second unit there, you know. So, you know, obviously, all the different things, reasons why on that itemized list, you know, have different remedies, and some of them are within our control and some of them are not. But it would be good to look at those because then we can maybe drill down and make it a lot more encouraging to bring these in legally.
And Peter, do you have anything for, before we go out to the public? We keep referring to the public who's standing right there.
No, I mean, it's always a balancing act. You know, some properties are, you know, really amenable to second units and others, you know, oftentimes in the hills where the parking's constrained and so forth, or the lots really small. You know, it's a balance between what's, you know, not overburdening the property or the neighborhood. And, you know, just as a general comment, in considering amending our codes with respect to second units, you know, going forward, it's just, it's really important to just pay attention to all of those factors to be balanced. And it's, it's a tough job. I mean, it's, it's a tough job, you know, when I was on the planning commission, just looking at things on a case-by-case basis and all the different policy conflicts that you have and when you're trying to, you know, figure out what's, what's appropriate for a given property. And that, that's about all I can add to the conversation at this point.
Well, I'm looking forward to listening, but I have to say that I am slightly lost here, and I'm hoping I'll catch up because the non-conforming piece is the piece that I'm thinking is really an issue here in that we're trying to make it possible to bring more of the non-conforming uses into conformity so that people can expand or do what it is that they want to legalize a second unit. But we're not talking about the non-conforming part unless I have missed half the conversation.
Very good point.
So I want to hear from the resident, and then I would like, if someone could shed some light on that for me so that we can get back to the original issue here. So please, thanks for your patience.
John Stulp, 107 Taylor Drive. I think it is all about conforming because once something's non-conforming, you've got all the hurdles to go over. And I think it's about preservation of affordable housing in Fairfax and inclusionary zoning. Those are kind of the two buzz phrases that I use. And the fact is, we're losing affordable housing. Just in my neighborhood, I can count five that we've lost in the last few years. So, I mean, we're not anywhere near equilibrium. We're losing it. And so, you know, after talking to Linda and Garrett and some other people at Town Hall, I kind of lost my interest in getting a permit even though I wanted one for my in-law unit. I really wanted to focus on just our policy because I think our policy is discouraging retention of affordable housing. A lot of it disappears, as I said. But right now, you can't do any alterations, period. I mean, that is a humongous hurdle. And I hear it every time at tax time, my accountant says, you know, this whole in-law unit you have is a complete money-losing proposition, and it is. So, but still, the biggest hurdle is you can't work on it. You buy a house with an affordable housing unit, and all of a sudden, you can't get permits. You'd be crazy to do it.
Why don't you just get a permit?
Well, that's, it's how many hurdles you want to go over, you know. In affordable housing, you know, I started making a list once. It's dozens of hurdles to create an in-law unit. San Francisco said, we're going to put 300, approve 300 affordable housing in-law units in the Castro district. How many were put in? One. It's probably for a family member or a friend because it, it just doesn't work out. And then on top of it, all you say, well, now you can't get permits once you have it. I mean, it's a total, it's a total loss. And the point is that in Fairfax, when people buy these homes and there are in-law units, hippies aren't buying homes, people of means are buying homes, and they're not going to keep them. I mean, I don't even want to keep mine, to be honest with you. It's just that I believe in affordable housing, so I have this conflict. We've rented it continuously for 15 years, but it's not rented right now. It doesn't even make sense to rent it. So the point is, these are going to be turned into home offices, exercise rooms, storage space, people are using for Airbnb. Because when you look at all the impediments to creating and to maintaining, it doesn't add up. It doesn't even come close to adding up, and that's why I want to address the council. So hopefully, in addition to the junior units that I'm really excited about, last week, that was a great discussion, we can have a global discussion on what it takes to preserve what we have. And, you know, the idea of getting new ones built, in-law units, it's an absolute total waste of time. There's a group in Bolinas advocating that. I meant to call them and see how many they've created. I bet it's zero. But the point is, it just doesn't add up if we're really interested in affordable housing to approach it this way. So hopefully, you'll allow owners to at least get permits to work on their affordable housing units. I'm not talking about more bedrooms. I'm not talking about making the footprint of the building bigger, but just can't you renovate a bathroom? Can't you put in windows and bring in more light? I mean, you know, I have a wood-burning fireplace I'd like to get rid of. It's why do I have to have all these impediments just because I'm non-conforming? It's really exclusionary zoning is what it is. And it's a kind of a holdover from the 60s, from a different time, a different place. We should have inclusionary zoning when affordable, where affordable housing is just part of everything we do. It's not non-conforming. It doesn't take special permits. It's part of how we live. So I hope you'll consider that. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Let's, let's, Laura, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I would love to.
Okay. In the meantime, you know, I, I would be very
Maybe one, I had a point of clarification. I think we're getting a tad confused, and I think the staff report had difficulty explaining that. But the issue that's before you really is the issue that the applicant, that the resident raised was, do you want to allow legal non-conforming uses to expand if it's related to, we'll call it, affordable housing purpose? That would require a code change. Right now, what happens is, in order to expand your unit, and you could do improvements to improve some, some level, maybe that's not the proper wording, but anyway, the issue, the person who has a legal not the proper wording, but anyway, the issue, the person who has a legal non-conforming use can't just come in and say, "I like a variance to add 500 square feet." What's required is you have to have a legal use. It has to be made legal first as part of that process. If the planning commission wanted to say, "Yes, everything you have works great. We'll give you a variance for X, Y, and Z," then that'd be fine. But there's a process unless you actually change the standards in a legal non-conforming use. And that's, that's what the issue is. And oddly, from my brief observation of the town code, I might be exaggerating, but quite a few units in town do not meet your zoning code standards as currently approved in the 70s or 80s, because lots, how many lots are actually 7,500 square feet? I don't know. Not very many, when you look at some of them. And so the difficulty is, those are legal non-conforming uses, and what happens is when they come in to do improvements, then they can only do a certain amount, but it requires a use permit. They may have to get variances. So it's an oddity of the code that's, you know, I can understand why it's put in place at the time in the 70s. It's something that'd be very difficult to look at. It really should be looked at, but there are lots of other things. So I just need to clarify. The issue is a legal non-conforming use, if under some circumstances you want to allow improvements, then we would need to change the town code, and that's kind of the discussion before you. We're actually recommending that you have a process. Let's try to make second units easier to be made second units, although that's not saying there won't be barriers. Sewer, water, that's always a barrier.
Can I ask a question? So, the gentleman that was just speaking, I apologize, I don't know your name. He was, so, I understand not expanding, and I think you're absolutely right. I didn't sit on the planning commission as long as Peter, but, you know, everybody that came in, pretty much, there was something unique, because the lots are small, there's no parking, especially up in the hills. There was always something that we had to look at that was unusual. It was very rare that everything just worked. But I think expanding, I think, is a problem, given our lot size, given the parking and all that, and the fact that you cannot park up in the hills, period. I mean, it's, there's no way. But, but I just wanna say, the question I have that I was listening is, let's say he wanted to remove his fireplace. Can, can we get a permit for that? Not expanding the, the floor area ratio, but can you do improvements within the existing envelope?
Well, see, this is what, in the past, the way it's been interpreted, the language is that you can maintain what's there, but that you can't change or improve it. So you can, you know, ex-
So, does the code say you cannot change or improve it, or does, is that the-
It says you can maintain the structure.
Okay, so our interpretation has been that that means you can't-
So we've allowed, we've allowed people to put in more energy-efficient windows and things like that, or if they need to redo the foundation, they can redo the foundation. But if they came in, you know, a lot of these cottages are really have funky floor plans, and they wanna come in and gut 'em and relay 'em out, we've said no.
Okay.
Because the intent of the ordinance is to eventually either get rid of the non-conforming use or bring the use into compliance with today's standards. So not allowing them to do too many improvements is the incentive supposedly to get them to finally provide parking, you know, where there is none. But that doesn't mean that you couldn't change the code to allow improvements that don't expand the square footage of the living space, right?
Okay.
You can change the, you can change the wording any way you want to allow improvements, but within reason where you're not increasing the living space square footage, right?
So if, if we were looking at this from the con, I mean, I realize this is more than second units, but let's just stay within the second units. If we were looking at it with the idea of bringing the illegal second units in from the cold, and if the planning commission looked at this and said, "Okay, we wanna make this as easy as possible to bring these in from the cold," and I don't know about this particular example, but they could do any improvement as long as they don't expand the floor, you know, the size.
Well, you could change your ordinance to state that.
But, see, that's, I think if we just, if we, I mean, I'm supportive of moving forward on those now, but if we do decide to do that, I think we ought to be as flexible as possible, you know, so that it is pretty easy for people to come in and make those legal.
Yeah, you know, there's a lot of different ways to handle it. The one amnesty ordinance said if you could prove your unit was there since a certain time, you didn't have to address parking, right? So you could, you could say-
Okay, so you could-
So if a neighborhood has already accommodated a second unit, and it's been there 20 years, obviously, people have learned to cope with the parking the way it is.
Right.
Right? But if someone comes in and they've put a unit in in the last five years, and they can't prove that it's functioning and, you know, working with the neighborhood, right? Do they just get legalized? I don't know. That's something the city has to decide how they wanna-
Okay.
-handle it.
Well, I'm sorry for interrupting. It just, you just raised a lot of questions, so I think Laura wanted to speak. Sorry for getting in your way.
I, I just wanted to echo some of the comments that, that Garrett made and that Barbara made, because I actually, I live in a legal non-conforming structure, and I would, I'm limited on expanding and that kind of thing. So it's an important issue, I think, that we should bring forward, and I kind of, I don't think I thought about it when we were making our list of items that the planning commission's working on as far as things that we, that we think might need some adjustment. So I think it's an important issue that we should discuss further.
And you're speaking as an individual, not as a member of the planning commission?
That's right, because it, it facts, it packs my home.
20 years ago, when we were younger, and I was on the planning commission, and you sit over there, would you agree with what I'm taking away here, was that the code was written back in days of yore to address a particular concern, trying to curtail and regulate very seriously development as it overtook our properties rather quickly? And now, the concern is less that, because we're fairly built out as a town, but now we feel the need to provide affordable housing, because that is the current concern in the community. And that we seem to have a code which is addressing a problem that is important, but perhaps needs to have greater flexibility to address the new problem of the new era. And is that what we're sort of talking about, sending back to the planning commission and to review anew with fresh eyes?
Yes. Yeah. I mean, you know, so, so, and, and units that are within a certain distance of public transportation, maybe you eliminate the parking requirement altogether. I agree, though, up on places like Ridge Road, if you start allowing units to expand without any parking improvements, it's just gonna make a bad situation worse. So there's areas of town where you can loosen up requirements, but there are some areas where, where you may make the decision that it needs to stay the way it is. So there's ways to craft the ordinance to address, you know, all the different situations.
Okay, so, what do you need from council in order to go forward and have the planning commission start to look at this more seriously?
No, I wanna do it.
So, I take it there's no more comments from the public then?
Any more comments from the public? No.
So really, all we need, really, in this case is, we have an understanding that you don't want, at this point, the council doesn't believe it's appropriate to modify the actual standards of legal non-conforming uses, but based on your discussion, giving us some ideas of what can be incorporated into the amnesty ordinance or a second unit-type ordinance, and then we could take that concept, draft something, and take it back to the planning commission for discussion. And then, obviously, whatever they come up with would come to the council for approval.
And, and I would recommend that you do that as one action. You're looking at the amnesty as well as the second unit, and amnesty is with as much flexibility as possible. I kinda like your idea of this stuff. The older ordinance where something had been there for so many years, but doing that as one action versus two steps.
John?
But I'm also, I mean, I, I think I just heard you said, "Well, not focusing on non-conforming uses so much," but I, I think that since so many places are non-conforming and we have a very limited, I mean, people have to go and get variances for just about anything, we should-
Does not, non-conforming? That was the whole-
Amnesty would be-
Amnesty's for second units.
I'm less concerned with-
Second units, non-conforming or conforming. This is where I'm, I'm, I'm-
I think what I understand is you were talking about, okay, so there's two parts of this. If you're looking at affordable housing, and we all agreed that second units were a priority for affordable housing, then if we keep it to second units with the amnesty as well, then that is dealing with non-conforming as well, because if you're looking at bringing things in from the cold that are illegal, I think they also would be non-conforming potentially.
Is that, I, I thought, I thought there were two different things we're talking about.
Yeah, but I think, I think I understand, and I thought this might happen. So there's non-conforming uses, and then there's non-conforming structures. A non-conforming structure can be, can house a non-conforming use. They're two different animals. So a non-conforming use is a use that is in a zone where that use is no longer allowed. A non-conforming structure might maintain a non-conforming setback, or it's too, it's too tall and no longer complies with the height regulations.
No, it's structure.
Well, our code addresses both.
I know, but we're not dealing with somebody opening up a, a foundry on Ridge Road. That would be a non-conforming use.
And what I'm not hearing from you, I don't think, is you wanna, you wanna address the non-conforming uses. If you start trying to allow non-conforming structures, I don't know that you wanna go there, because then what's the point of having setback regulations and height regulations?
If you look at both, though, then you have the maximum flexibility to consider whether the use and the structure are appropriate for Ridge Road as a, versus scenic, for instance, on the flatlands.
Well, we can look at it all, but I mean, I don't, I don't think you would want to take someone who has an existing structure that's been there since 1922, and, and, you know, if they run into some kind of a problem, not allow them to rebuild a damaged structure because it doesn't meet a current set, I mean, I'm not, sorry, I'm understanding.
I think, I think they're talking that. I, I think, maybe we, I could clarify again, that I believe what we're, what we proposed to the council was to take a look at second units, in this case, only, in terms of how we can encourage second units to come out of the cold or be developed. And within that, it would address the issues of, we'll call it, legal non-conforming structures of the second unit that may be the issue as Linda raised. Well, it's been there a while, there shouldn't be a parking requirement, or, for example, let's say, it doesn't meet setbacks, but that's okay, it's been there a while. So those are the things we would take a look at. We aren't actually advocating that we change any of the legal non-conforming uses provision, nor are we advocating at this point that we go back and look at all the different zoning codes to try to figure out in a single-family residence of, "Well, that lot's only 4,000 square feet. Let's figure out something to make it so that is now legal, legal conforming structure," because I think that'd be far beyond our ability to figure that out in this decade, if ever. So, I like to narrow the scope and focus on what Jim had put together in the housing element, which is really focusing on, let's take a look at second units, address that, try to address as much as possible to address the issues to make it easier to make those legal units. But it's not gonna be without issues, 'cause parking, traffic, you know, you name it, that's always gonna be an issue. Obviously, sprinklers, there's some provisions for that. But I think that's what we like to do, is get there, and this is kind of discussion with the council, of, "Let's focus on that and agree that we wanna change the legal non-conforming uses provision of the code, but let's just focus on second units and coming up with, lack of a better term, exceptions for how we can make them fit and be allowed."
Okay, so this is recommended as just a discussion item, so are you getting what it is you need so that we can move on? Yes?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Linda. So, moving on, something's echoing. Okay. It's okay. So we are now going to continue with item 12. And this would go to Garrett for a staff report.
So, yes, this item, as you may recall, is really the second reading adoption of the ordinance that deals with medical marijuana cultivation. Now, some things have changed, obviously, with the governor signing Bill AB 21, removes that deadline of March 1st. It somewhat creates more options for the council to think about how they want, what they want to do moving ahead. And so, you know, maybe it's just some quick background. Obviously, the council discussed this issue in November, December, January. The planning commission discussed it in January, and you also discussed it in, no, I'm sorry, November, December, and January, council discussed this issue, and it all came about because of the deadline of March 1st in order to have something in effect governing the cultivation of medical marijuana. But since that provision is now removed, I think that it brings up some core questions for the council to think about regarding the second reading. And so, at your January meeting, the council had a long deliberation and discussion and came up with different provisions, and we incorporated those changes that you did when you introduced the ordinance. But before we even go there, I think there are a few questions now, 'cause there's some different options for the council to think about. So, one option is, yes, you can conduct the second reading, adopt the ordinance as is. Two, you could change, you could change the ordinance, take it back, make it a first reading, and come back with a second reading. The other thing is, you could actually choose to do nothing. And if you choose to do nothing, then you wouldn't have an ordinance in place, and then you could decide to either direct the planning commission to perhaps think about re-crafting an ordinance and coming back to your recommendation, or as the council, you could say, "Well, you know what? Let's think about it. We'd like to have a little more public comment. We just like the broader topic to be brought back to us for further discussion and direction." So you actually have a lot of options now on how you wanna proceed, because that deadline is no longer pressing. So it, it makes it a little more complicated. It was a little more clear before, but now it's a little more complicated. You're not doing the urgency ordinance, because obviously, there's no March 1st deadline, and now you have this situation where there isn't a pressing deadline, you know, ultimately, should you have something? Sure, you could take a little more time. Straightly from a staff perspective, given all the time the council has put into this, the planning commission, may not be a bad thing to have something on the books. You can always then go back, see how it works, come back with changes later, direct the planning commission, and come back some things. And so you just don't know, and then obviously, if there's actually some type of ballot measure in November, something to take in concern, that may change different things. But with that, so as staff, rather than going through any of the changes that you directed us to make, which we did in this ordinance, perhaps that's more of the core question for the council.
Mm-hmm.
So I really conclude the staff report. If you have questions-
Okay. And John, before you start, can I just, again, request that we just ask questions and leave our comment time till after we've heard public comment?
I don't know how many questions there are to ask. I mean, this is, yeah, I mean, this is clearly, I mean, this is basically what we talked about the last time, and here it is before us. We're pretty familiar with what it is. So in terms of clarifying questions, I don't think I do, but I certainly have a couple of comments to make regarding what we're doing here. But if you want, I can leave those till after public comment.
No, if it clarifies what it is we're doing, then that's great. I just meant to deliberate or to express our, our, you know, our opinions, and we would wait till after we hear from the public.
Yeah, as Garrett's just, you know, comments just now, and he's just saying in the film business, if it wasn't for the last minute, nothing would ever get done. And our feet were to the fire, and we came up with something that is far from perfect. I mean, I already have a change or two that I wanna put in this, which I won't go into at this point. But we have something that we put a lot of hours into, and a lot of people have put a lot of thought into, and it would be silly, I think, to throw that away. I mean, because we came up with this, I mean, we're kind of at the place where we are with, when we had this March deadline, because the state legislature, for almost 20 years, did nothing in terms of regulating- did nothing in terms of regulating medical marijuana in terms of these issues here. And then they were trying to straighten up the books because they were afraid that, no, okay, and then we'll have a different situation in November if something passes on the ballot there. For the same reason, I think it would be good to have something on the books here.
Any other questions or clarifications?
Garrett and Janet, I assume, I glanced at them and I just made the assumption that the language in the emergency ordinance, item 11, is identical to 12, just except that 11 would be adopted as an emergency. Okay.
Anyone else, or are we ready to go out to the public? Thank you, public, for your patience.
Hi, my name is Andy Newell. Just because of the stage we are at now, where it's very open as to Governor Brown's considerations of marijuana, I just wanted to ask the council whether they would consider the schools and the preschools of having some sort of buffer zone around them so that whatever happens in the future, that, you know, our children and our youngest children kind of not in the, the zone of wherever everyone wants to smoke or to sell or do anything like that. I know there are going to be lots of considerations. If you go to Perry Park sometimes with your kids, I mean, there are people who smoke there, and it's pretty strong stuff. And, you know, you get a reaction from your kids, they don't know what it is. But just in terms of, you know, all the things that you have to think of going on with this in the future and all the enthusiasm for it, just that we're able to protect, you know, that area of our society for the minute, that's really it. I know that, you know, everything's up in the air, so to speak, marijuana. But, but yeah, thank you.
Thank you. And, and just to clarify that at this point, what's before us in this ordinance 797 is, is just about cultivation, but we'll take your comments going forward because we will be dealing with a whole myriad of different things around marijuana. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Tim Nardell. I'm former resident of Fairfax. My wife, Rozelle, runs the First France Montessori preschool on Mono Avenue in Fairfax, and I'm the president of the Board of the Marin Childcare Council. And I want to echo the, the parents' concern that we just heard, and I know there are other parents from the preschools here tonight who couldn't stay late enough to have this issue heard. And of course, the governor took the pressure off today of you all and all of us in giving more time to consider the issues. But I, I also agree with what Mr. Reed said, that you've put time into this, and I really applaud the council in trying to look at this issue and take a balanced approach on this issue to, to address hopefully all the constituents that are concerned with this issue. And as far as the, as far as the parents and schools, I think there should be some kind of a buffer zone as part of this measure, the cultivation measure, because there is the plants are very powerful, and the smell even from cultivation is powerful, and there should be a buffer zone. So the, the simple suggestion I would, I would have for this, this ordinance that's before you would be to add a provision M in, in section 17, 138, 340, the standards section, and the section M would just read, continuing on from section L, no medical marijuana cultivation shall be maintained or operated within 200 feet of a school, preschool facility, or a public park. One way, I, I understand there's been some concern about the sort of flexible definition of what's a daycare, there might be children in a home, is, or three children in a home going to be an issue, or, you know, for enforcement. One way to, one way to deal with it, I think preschool facility keeps, doesn't include the, the home daycare, another way to do it would be a preschool of more than 12 children, which would also not be in a home facility. I think it's also important to have the public parks as, as part of that, and of course, the public schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. So let's bring it back to council for comments.
I would go with Mr. Nardell's recommendation on this, the rush to judgment, we'll give it a little bit of a reprieve, but I think we can honor John's concern and the resident and parents' concern on this and bring it back in a month. And also give, you can never have enough daylight and an issue as sensitive in this as this, and, and you know, we did discuss it last time at a very late hour. So now that the governor has signed this, there might be even more attention in the community, it's a little more highlighted, it's a little more fresh, not other legislation being signed probably by the governor this week. So it's going to get picked up in the papers and people might have some thoughts. So why not kick it for four weeks, bring it back, do a first reading if that's necessary on a change such as this, and make a, make a small intelligent adjustment.
Barbara.
Yeah, so I, I hear those concerns, and I think one of the things we did in the ordinance, of course, I can't find it right now, is to say that adjacent to schools, and I'm not sure what else it says, but one of the things that came up last time is within 200 feet of White Hill School was a woman who had very aggressive cancer, and she died a few years ago. So that's an example of someone who may have wanted to grow medical marijuana and couldn't have done it. So I understand, and I'm, I, I think one of the things we came to was just adjacent to, so that it would just be right next to it. And also the, the concern is that, you know, kids walk all over, so even if they're not at school, I mean, they're walking home from school, there's a lot of places where they could potentially see this, but we've done a lot to try to screen it. I'm not opposed to taking it up again next month, but I am very concerned about this amendment, even though I, I really understand your suggestion, and I know, I think Renee was interested in something like that. And in a late hour, we came to the idea of just adjacent for this one example that I'm familiar with, and there are many others. So within 200 feet of a school or park, a lot of people live. So I'm not supportive of that change, I'm supportive of waiting a month, but I also feel very strongly that, as John expressed, we did a lot of work on this and nothing's just, and we can continue talking about it for the next year or two years, but it does seem to me like having something on the books, again, Fairfax would be a leader, and we'll see what happens if there's a ballot initiative next year for recreational and should it pass, and it would seem like that would be the time to really start looking at everything. But, so I don't see the harm in waiting a month, but I don't feel very supportive of that change just for the reason that there would be qualified patients within 200 feet of schools. And, but, but I do understand what you're saying, so I don't want to make you think that I'm not unsympathetic, and I know there's many more parents that couldn't be here that would express the same thoughts. So thank you.
Okay, John, oh, we'll go down the line, Peter, sorry.
Yeah, I mean, when we were discussing this last, I mean, we, the language, Barbara, that gets somewhere in here, it was basically elementary and middle schools, and we left preschools out of there because we were not.
We were tired.
Yeah, we were very tired, yes.
I guess I want to say, I think.
And we were also unclear on the difference between preschools and daycare and things like that.
So I want to just say that I'm fine with preschool facilities, I'm just not fine with the 200 feet.
Yeah, and, yeah, I think, yeah, 200 feet may well be pretty far. I mean, I'm not against expanding adjacent to a lesser number than 200 feet, but adjacent, you know, adjacent means next door, basically. I think it's less of a legal definition than, you know, a certain number of feet. The other thing is that there's parks all over the place, and, you know, and what constitutes a park, and, you know, maybe playgrounds are defining it more carefully than, than a park, but, yeah, I mean, we have to look at, at see what, what our definitions would be on that. But we're pretty close, so we should keep it up.
Peter.
Yeah, I'm not sure if we, I, I don't, my recollection was that we did not actually include language related to prohibiting cultivation next to a school. I, I don't know that it made it in there, is it?
It's in section, it's H, it's requirement H under standards.
Hold on a second.
You added, "The council agreed on outdoor cultivation is prohibited on parcels adjacent to public or private elementary or middle schools." That's the language that the council said on.
Which section is that, I'm sorry?
Uh, that's in the standards section 17.138.340.
340, H is in Henry?
H, yes, and it's on page five of the red line.
Okay, hold on one second. Okay, parcels adjacent to school or private elementary, okay. Yeah, I, okay, I'm glad that's in there. That was my sense, too, is that, you know, if someone is cultivating right next to a school, you know, the, the smell is pretty strong and, you know, that could be an attractive nuisance. It is, I, I'm not sure about expanding it beyond that distance if that would, would be that effective as well. I kind of share that concern with Barbara. I suppose there could be a procedure for an exemption, you know, to cultivate closer if we decided, you know, to move that out to say 100 feet or something from a school. But I, I think, I think, I'm glad that did make it in here, that adjacent to a school, because I think there is something about being right next to a school that is, is problematic. And it is good to have the, the pressure off of having to pass something, you know, tonight. So I'm, I'm okay with, pardon my cough, you know, slight delay in getting it, getting it passed. I think it's, it's a pretty, we have put a lot of work into it, though, and I'm kind of inclined to go forward with it. And so those are my comments.
So I have some comments, having thought about this ad nauseam for the last two months. I, I, I'm hearing everyone talk about that we've done so much work on this that, you know, it would be a real shame to scrap it because we've put so much into it. In my opinion, I don't even believe we've really begun what is required of us and what we're obligated to do in terms of having a real transparent public process take place. In this town, we've watched 14 years of work and public opportunity get scrapped for lack of public transparency and process, and this has been going on since, correct me if I'm wrong, Michelle, but November is when we first heard conversation about this. And in the meantime, I don't know if we're all in touch with different folks in the community, which is part of our strength and that we are, but the, the people that I've had opportunity to converse with and the people that I've mentioned that this is going on to are so far away from having this on their radar that if they were to look at this and we were to say, here's what we did, I think they'd be stunned, and I think they'd be very disappointed that, given the fact that this was meant to be a placeholder, it wasn't meant to be, let's put it in place because we did so much work on it. Now with this pressure off, we have an opportunity to do this right. And I feel, especially as we went and approved a first reading at that last meeting, I had 25 things that I would have wanted to change had it not been midnight and everybody was anxious to leave here. I think this is vitally important in terms of how we're going to go forward. I also believe that as soon as recreational marijuana comes to us on a ballot, most probably in the next year, we will be having to deal with this in a whole different way and a whole different level again. So given that we don't have to do this, I think for the fact that it lacks time for transparency, there has been no public process, there has been no folks of faith, any mental health workers, any school addiction specialists, any administrators of the schools, any parents of young kids who are going to be living with this in their community, it defines our community, this is a very important issue in our community. I think that the issue is regulation. I don't think that the folks who really, really want a more growing and opportunity for growing, commercial or personal growth for medical marijuana are happy with what we did. And I know that the folks who are very concerned and afraid are definitely not happy with what we did. So I'm sticking my neck out here, but I could list a few things that really, really bother me. I don't agree that we should ban this. I think, you know, Fairfax setting the, you know, setting the pace for all of this, we're banning it with bazillion exemptions, which is an administrative nightmare in my mind. You have to be subjective about who should be exempt and who shouldn't. I believe it should be allowed with a bazillion restrictions, which is like we did with the ordinance for the dispensaries. I don't think we've looked at that. That's what would put Fairfax on the map if we were going to be really progressive in our thinking and make it, make it doable to say, yes, restrictions have been met. I also think that banning and then not banning, if we send it back to Planning Commission, is nothing but confusing for people and causes a little bit more tension between sides of a very important issue. I was greatly relieved that Governor Brown signed this thing today. It was sort of an ask of the heavens that he did this so that we could pause. And I think that's why he, what he intended and what all of the subcommittees of the Senate, and then the Senate, and then the Assembly, all had in mind, which was, wow, let's relieve these people because they're all fumbling. So here we have this great thing, it doesn't need to be put in the fire. It really should be put in the drawer, in my opinion, and we should slowly proceed with public process back through the Planning Commission to look at this. We don't need to do it right away. And I think that, I feel very strongly that we have not done our jobs here as council members.
That was very thoughtful. Do you think we should wait till after November?
Well, I think we're going to learn month by month a lot about what's coming in November. I think Supervisor Rice gave a little bit of a, little tidbit of what she thought was happening just today, and I would, I would, I would imagine that we're going to learn a lot in the coming days. And I think the state and the medical piece that they passed, the three, the three, I guess their initiatives, are confusing at best, even at the state level. 2018 is when they would be actually enacting those laws. So in the meantime, we're doing this, it feels premature, and it feels as though we have a great opportunity here to work with both sides so that we are not starting from two very different polls.
I would suggest this, I mean, I think you're very thoughtful, I think you, you know, we can always do nothing and just put it aside. There's probably a lot of growing that's going on already that we don't know about. But I do want to say one thing that I do object to what you said. We did have a public process, it may have been a short process, but we were public and open and transparent, and I don't want people to think that we were not.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I do think that we were rushed.
Yeah, and I didn't mean that we didn't have a legal public process, because that indeed we did. What I mean is time and opportunity for outreach, for really collecting public comment from folks who may not and certainly don't sit here at midnight.
Well, and I, I do want to say, so, as I think you have swayed me to the idea. Well, and I, I do want to say, so, I think you have swayed me to the idea, at least my thoughts are, "Let's do nothing." I mean, we don't have to throw this away. We can always pick it up later, but, and I don't think it's the right time to send it to the Planning Commission. So why not just take this off our plates and put it aside and see what happens over the next few months? And also, I think you also raised a good point about, I mean, the state gave themselves till 2018 to put regulations together. So who knows what they're going to end up with as well. I do like to see Fairfax being in the forefront on these things.
We are because everyone else is banning it.
Right. So I think we, we've kind of set our, I mean, I would also say that even though we banned it with exceptions, we set our mark that we want to allow this here with limitations. And I think that's a message that we're the only city in Marin has done. And, you know, it's nice to see the county finally coming around and dispensaries how many years late. But, so I, I'm in agreement with you as far as, "Let's put it aside and let's wait and see," but I don't think we should throw it away.
Yeah, I mean, I, I wasn't saying, "Let's rush through and get the, you know, just add our two cents tonight and then, and then send it through." I mean, I am very much in favor of thoughtful, thoughtfully going about it, but I don't think we should throw away what we've done and stop. I mean, because I think what we have gone through, the legal process, and certainly we did our, you know, that we've gone through the legal process in terms of what's legally required of us, but I think as a community, yes, I'm hearing from people as well as you are, various different things, and I've been giving it thought and, you know, nobody likes to have anything rushed through, especially something as important or influencing as this. And really, I see this is, it's really a template of what we might come up with in the future because we're going to have to deal with a lot more than people, cancer patients or marijuana cardholders or whatever, growing. I mean, there's a lot of different aspects to it if some sort of ballot initiative passes in, in November, and I guess we will have to wait and see what we're going to have to deal with there. But I don't think we should go asleep at the switch. I think that we should continue to talk with the community and figure out what really makes sense for Fairfax. And I very much like your approach, Renee, of not calling it a ban. We should allow it with lots of restrictions. I think that the, the Marin Alliance dispensary that was here in Fairfax was groundbreaking for the state of California. It really, there's a lot of attention to DCL that was put in there, and it was done right. And that's an example that we can aspire to.
Yeah, I, you know, we have had a public process and, you know, so I, I think we, you know, we have had a, you know, it was not the longest time spent on an ordinance, but, you know, we did have a lot of public participation. I think generally, the ban approach with an exception for medical cultivation is a good approach. You know, the idea, if we do want to have a reasonable degree of cultivation, I think that's the way to do it. The, and I think the ordinance is generally pretty effective in allowing, you know, reasonable amounts of cultivation without properties getting, turning into grow farms that, you know, are, become a real problem because of the volume of marijuana being cultivated. I think that's the, sort of the main balance that we had to strike. But it is interesting, given the passage of AB twenty-one, we were in a situation where if we didn't pass something, we had no control whatsoever. And someone could go in and presumably, you know, every house could be growing, you know, a hundred, ninety-nine plants per parcel, and that, that's what we would want to avoid. So in some sense, the pressure is off to have to act or lose our ability to ever regulate that. And I'm, I'm kind of on the fence. I, I think it, this is a, a pretty good ordinance irrespective of the fact that that we're not under the gun to do something now or never be able to do something. You know, I, I would be open to some consideration about, you know, distance from a school, although I think adjacent to the proper parcel is a, is a pretty good approach. And things will definitely change once recreational cultivation or consumption is legalized, if that happens. But that won't be going into effect for a couple of years. So it does make sense to have this ordinance in the meantime to somewhat maintain the status quo. And, you know, I, I would support going forward with it. But fortunately, if we don't go forward with it, we aren't in a bad position of not being able to do anything about excess cultivation. But, which is, is good. But I, I'm, I'm in favor of, of going forward with the, with the ordinance as we drafted it.
I'll make a motion. Even though I, I heard what Peter said.
Barbara, before you do that, though, I'm wondering, maybe you could incorporate this in somehow? Depending on what your motion is. Going forward, instead of, if it were my, you know, just waiting, what, how do we incorporate this idea that we would gather or garner more public input as we?
Well.
If we, as we proceed?
Well, maybe before I make a motion, I would say that, you know, the issue has been raised. I think we had a lot of people focusing on Fairfax, people who don't necessarily live here but have an interest. So I think all of us tend to be out in the community. I, I guess I'm not suggesting, I, I wouldn't want to suggest that we do a workshop or something of that nature. I don't really know what that would get us at this point because it is so evolutionary what's going to happen. I would suggest that, I know you have a lot of contacts with parents and others in the community, I think we all should do our own reconnaissance. And maybe we do something as part of the motion to take this up again as we see what's happening with the election. Maybe it's an informational item that as we see what's happening with this initiative process, that it comes back to the council just for an informational item. And at that time, maybe we say, "We want to take this up," or "We want to take something different up," or "We want to take a wait-and-see approach." And so that's what, what my motion would be is that this time, we set this aside and that September, October, when we know what's going to be on the ballot, that we come back with a report on what that ballot initiative looks like, and we can just have an open discussion as the council. Is it something we want to have a workshop then? Or do we want to wait and see what happens? So that's what I would recommend. What do you, we're getting a nodding or a no?
Perhaps, perhaps before someone seconds the motion, the town attorney could perhaps could share some thoughts.
All right.
And then I have a couple of thoughts, and then you can consider that.
I saw a shaking of the head over there.
Allowed to get involved in elections.
I know, I know. So we have no idea what's coming in November as far as recreational.
We would know in September if it's going to be on the ballot.
Yeah, yeah, well, there could be more than one thing on the ballot. And how that shakes out is, is going to be, I think, a full employment for attorneys, actually. But for this, what we have in place right now are new state laws. And the next thing that we were going to bring to you, the next issue that you need to deal with is delivery. And that deadline is coming up in January, that we need to deal with how you're going to regulate delivery if you are. You've got a dispensary ordinance, a very comprehensive dispensary ordinance. It's not in your zoning code. And we were actually, we've had a number of discussions about taking that ordinance, adding in cultivation, adding in delivery, and moving it over into zoning. And there are a number of reasons why we might want to do that. One of the things that we want to think about too is certainly, you know, we can slow the process down, the, the deadline has been removed now, but we still need to keep in mind that we do have these state laws that are in effect right now, regardless of whatever else is coming. And we need to be able to address those. So if there's nothing in November, if nothing happens, we still have the medical marijuana aspect of it that's in state law, and we're going to have the state licensing delivery services, we're going to have the state licensing cultivation, growing, commercial growing. And one of the things that, that I'm kind of concerned about is if we don't have anything at all and somebody comes and gets a, a commercial grow license, there's going to be an argument that grandfathered in. And so, from the state, they get a license from the state. Before we have anything on the books, there's going to be an argument that their grandfathered in. Not that we couldn't then enact something, but we'll still have to deal with, but they were here before. And so those are just kind of things I want you to think about. I, I understand the pressure's been taken off, but the issues are still there and they need to be addressed.
So question for you. The cultivation, as far as, I might be wrong, but wasn't that January twenty eighteen before the state starts actually doing that?
That is the estimate of when they're going to start issuing licenses?
Okay, so.
That's an estimate.
Okay. And I know they want to put their regulations out, and typically, a non-controversial regulation takes eighteen months. So it's going to be a controversial one. Okay, as far as delivery service, when would they start licensing delivery services?
I believe that's in twenty seventeen.
Twenty seventeen, okay. So one of the things I heard you saying is we want to take all this stuff into zoning and we want to do, and I hope you, I'm really asking you questions. Cultivation, delivery, dispensary, move that into zoning. I think one of the things I've seen since I've been on this council is when we start trying to do everything in one fell swoop, it becomes a real problem. What I would suggest is, I think you're bringing up a really good point about delivery. And I know there are folks that are very interested in delivery services in Fairfax, is that it seems to me that rather than trying to fix everything all at once and then ending up in this sort of conundrum that we've ended up before when we've tried to do this, is why not do something, and I, I'm just asking, about if we're going to regulate delivery services and we want to do that, and that would be the first deadline that's approaching, what would be the, and I would say, kind of jumping on to what Renee's saying, is give us enough time to not jam something through. Give us enough time to potentially do a real workshop where we, on a Saturday or something, but what makes sense? Because I think what, and, and I would say, rather than trying to do one full ball of wax, let's take up delivery. We're not in a big rush on cultivation right now. I heard what Renee was saying. Why not, and would that be that we would need to start that realistically to really hear from people in May? So that we're not, you know, fixing it the last minute, making people angry, referendums, but something like that, which makes sense. A piecemeal approach rather than trying to deal with everything. What were you going to say, Renee?
No, I, I was just going to say, did you say two thousand seventeen would be?
Delivery.
Okay, so if something's going to come to the November ballot around recreational, we'll know September?
We'll know before that.
We'll, we'll know. And I can only imagine that it will throw so many wrenches in everything that we're talking about, from cultivation to delivery to dispensary, that this will all be sort of a moot point. So I'm wondering, I would still maintain that we would, we would wait and collect and gather our own input from the community in our own ways and that we would see where we're going in November. And we could start the conversation about delivery, but I think it's sort of the same situation.
I think there's, I would just say one thing, that I don't think recreational is going to make this moot.
No.
I absolutely think that's not correct. And one of the things that happened in, I believe it was Colorado, is they really didn't have anything on the books. So when they got recreational, they have, they still have a mess. And so my feeling is, and I haven't talked to the powers that be, one of the things the state was trying to do was get a lot of laws on the books for medical, which we already have legal, so we would be poised, if there were to be recreational, to be able to kind of jump off of that. So it would not be such an unregulated mess. So I respectfully kind of disagree with, "Let's wait." I think dispensaries might be not as difficult as this, and we might be able to do that one piece and give ourselves enough time because as we saw even with cultivation, while we kept trying to narrow it, everybody was bringing in other issues, even tonight. So I guess I, I'm still advocating for the idea that we might want to look at a piecemeal approach with dispensaries and start it early enough so that we're not in this rush mode. But Janet, you were going to add something before I interrupted.
No, I just agree with your comments on, on setting up the framework, that this is medical and that's what the state law is about right now. But it sets up a framework, I believe, to be able to deal with recreational.
It's a, it's a regulatory framework.
Yeah.
To have some regulation, although it would look very different. Okay, I, I understand what you're saying.
I, I echo the idea that we shouldn't try to do everything at once. Deliveries is going to be a whole other can of worms. I think our dispensary ordinance is actually pretty good right now. I don't know that we need to change anything, you know, but the cultivation piece too, you know, it is separate. And I look at it as, what do we want to do as a town to get some handle on cultivation so that it's, doesn't create, you know, hassles, nuisances? And, and the safety issue, if you have too much cultivation, because that, that does invite crime. And I think it, it does make sense to have something on the books now because we don't know what's going to happen with recreational. And even the, the sort of the medical marijuana landscape is a little murky. You know, if, do we want to be able to have some control over how much marijuana people are going to be growing in Fairfax for medical purposes? That's one thing we can take control of that we have with this ordinance, which, you know, makes some sense. And I don't know if, excuse me, if recreational marijuana, if that passes, if that would be, allow towns to, you know, limit cultivation. Maybe it will. And, you know, maybe even if marijuana cultivation is legal for recreational purposes and we have the opportunity, we may want to consider having some kind of limit on cultivation, just like any other activity, you know, if it's, you know, how, do we want to, you know, you can't have a winery in your backyard in Fairfax because of zoning. It's kind of addresses the same thing. You know, if you make a, a little bit of backyard wine or whatever, or in your garage, it's okay, but at a certain level, you know, it becomes problematic. And, and I think, again, that's what this ordinance is about, and I think it does make sense to go forward with it so that we're not having a situation where to go forward with it so that we're not having a situation where we don't have anything on our books, and, you know, that's the question I think we need to address. And I think that this does come up with a reasonable balance of allowing patients to grow enough marijuana for their purposes without it being excessive.
Well, I would like to go ahead and make that motion that I started. And I would say that, Peter, I heard you, but I also heard the rest of the council, and my motion would be this, and people may not agree, that we set this ordinance aside at this time, that we consider these issues, which might be focused on dispensaries, maybe in the May-June timeframe, and...
Delivery.
I'm sorry, did I, I meant deliveries. And, but at this point, we set this aside, May-June timeframe, consider delivery, maybe discuss this briefly, but at this point, we set it aside. And that would be my motion.
Second.
So we've got motions, oh...
Just a question of clarification?
Yes.
And maybe just a little commentary? The commentary is basic. From a strictly a staff perspective, certainty is always better. Having something that allows us to be able to gauge when someone's doing something is great. I'm not saying you need to do it right this second, but certainty is good. My other comment is, what happens in all council struggle is that as you have something and you went through a process, granted, we didn't put out a lot of outreach, but you had a process, you spent a lot of time, people spoke, is that as you go through the process, there's always going to be someone's going to change something. And then at some point, it's like, okay, if you keep on doing changes, you're never going to adopt it, because then you might go back to the beginning. So, but I'm advocating you need to do something right now, but I get it, but we appreciate certainty. More importantly, the question on deliveries. Now, typically, something like that, because we thought it would go in zoning code, would go to the planning commission first. But what I hear the council is thinking as, perhaps you should come to the council first to create the parameters and direction to give to the planning commission as we craft the ordinance, because otherwise, we're going to have an issue, something's going to come to you, and you're going to go, oh my goodness, whose idea was that?
But that's the process we took with this. And it got us right here.
But only because the time required that, before we take it to the planning commission, we very well knew that the council needed to provide parameters, because there wouldn't be the time to send it back to them and say, what were you guys thinking?
What you want to do is, you want us to consider delivery first, and then send it to the planning commission.
Only if that's, that's what I'm hearing, is the council's desire.
And at the same time, you want us not to be as foreclosing of the cultivation aspect here, and to begin to put it more, into a more definite track.
That'd be something to think about, because each time we come to a second reading, and I'm not arguing the merits of any revisions, every time you change it, it becomes the first reading, and then you get into the discussion of, well, should we go back to the planning commission, should we change it, should we monitor it? But that is difficult. I think Councilmember Wineshof used to say...
I think you're hearing, and I'm, I make the friendly amendment on that, but also to Renee's point, I think that we did the requirements of outreach, but they were abridged, and they were abridged because of the artificial constraints that we had to put upon them. I take the measure of Garrett's point, which is, we should have definite, and I think Peter spoke to this, so we should perhaps put a six-month visit this in June or July, before the silly season starts with politics and all that stuff in the far end, and say to the public, okay, we're giving an extra five, six months here for consideration on these issues, please come to us informally, as council members, or formally during the public process, and we will begin to incorporate, I think, that this first reading will, we'll have to do another first reading, but we can begin it then in the mid-year process.
It's, my only concern, let me just real quick, my only concern is that we make sure that that six months doesn't just fly by, and that there's been no real formal, and I don't mean a workshop, I don't mean something very big and formal, way for the public to know besides our regular agenda, that they can come and speak, that they should express, because in the next six months, we'll be crafting something that we think people will want to have some way in on.
That's our job. That's our job.
Well, no, it's not really our job.
Sure.
To do all of the public outreach, to make sure that people...
No, 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 I thought you raised the point that on issues of particular public concern, immediate public concern, they talk to all of us and share the thoughts.
Well, absolutely, I mean, I'll talk to a trillion people, but my question is, how will they know, and not the people I know, but the people who I don't know, or don't know any of you, to come to us, or to say, hey, you know, we want to, so I would love to see a little plan of how we will do public, public, like, outreach, to let people know that in the next six months, we're working with this template to come up with something that works for our community that is our path.
Well, how about, okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Let me interject here. I think kicking it down the road for six months will put it back to sleep. I mean, I think if we say, you know, I would, you know, offer a substitute, I was going to talk about a substitute motion of, instead of not doing anything, continuing this for two months. That keeps it on the front burner in terms of the public. You know, it's not like, oh, we're going to talk, you know, and they're going to say, oh, well, when they get around to it, I'll raise my opinion. Two months, now the public's feet are to the fire, much as ours were to the fire in this process, but we're saying, okay, we're doubling the amount of time. And of course, it'll be a first reading then, and then a second reading the month after, so really, already, we're talking about four months.
So you're saying the April, bring it forward, the April meeting, have a second reading if appropriate, in May?
Well, or it'll be a first reading.
First reading, I'm sorry, in April.
It'll be a first reading, and then the second one at the earliest would be May.
I would, I would...
You know, that keeps it on the front burner, it keeps it in the thing, and we could...
Can I propose maybe that we do it in three steps, then? Because I think we need, before a reading comes to us, we need to have a discussion that's, that we blast out outreach for, that, hey, this is your chance, because we're coming back with a first reading next month.
Perhaps a suggestion based on all your comments is, why doesn't staff come back next meeting with a plan for outreach? Some of that could far be to me suggest, but there's peak democracy, there's surveys, there's newsletters, and so we could come back to you with what we believe your direction to be regarding your timeframe, and what you would like for deliveries, in terms of deliveries as in, do you want a workshop, you want to come to you first, before you get planning commission direction, so we'll come up something related to that. This item, I think I understand what the council is thinking, so come back to you with something along those lines, and then you could provide and have some agreement on how you'd like to proceed, puts out a game plan for the public.
You're talking about for both delivery and cultivation?
Correct.
For both, okay.
I think we should not deal with, try to deal with delivery and cultivation at the same time.
Plan.
We could stagger the two.
He's just going to come up with a plan.
Well, so a couple things. I would support tabling this for a couple months, I, you know, to allow, you know, more outreach. I don't think we need to do anything, you know, out of the ordinary, I mean, it's publicly noticed. It may make sense to, you know, do outreach to, you know, youth groups and, you know, groups that are concerned with substance abuse and so forth. But I would support, you know, coming back to this in a couple months.
Why don't we do this, Peter, just because I think Garrett's, I mean, it's getting late again, is Garrett's said, okay, so at this point, we set it down for now, Garrett's going to come back to us with a plan for public outreach, which would, could be a staggered thing for this. It would also include where this could fall in the process, this cultivation ordinance, and then staggering it to look at delivery, a staggered plan. So the idea is, we're getting a plan, and right now, we're taking no action on this ordinance, and really, we're giving direction to staff, is come back to us with a plan, which would include the public outreach and the timing.
Right, and in addition, within that, you can always, then, the following month, because on March, you'll have an opportunity to talk about it, you could also say, oh, and by the way, we really think you should do the second, bring back the second reading or first reading, or whatever you'd like. So the idea is, whatever the staff report has, should hopefully incorporate your different comments and come up with something that we think could be something the council liked to consider.
I'd like to make a motion to support that.
Second, oh, third then.
To support what, what's the motion?
What the motion is, we put this down tonight, we take no action on it, Garrett comes back with a plan, which includes public outreach for cultivation, potentially for the reading, and also public outreach plan for taking up delivery and the timeframes for both of those. So, that's the motion.
And I've heard, so Kohler, motion Kohler, and who seconded that? And second, Wineshof? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No, and let me, this is...
No, we don't need an explanation.
It's a no.
Okay, so, I...
Well, the no might be useful to town staff, would it?
But can we go through it first and just, then you can qualify, is that okay? I want, I want to co...
It's a no.
Okay, you've got it. Okay.
Yeah, I, we should deal with the ordinances in front of us, and I think this is just creating a lot of delay and mixing them together is just going to create an unworkable framework. So, those are my comments.
Great, moving forward. It's 11 o'clock. Okay, just let me get reorganized here.
Renee, wait, wait.
So we've got 14 and 15, so we are...
16.
Okay, hold on, guys, just give me a second here. Water conservation, so we're at 15, and then we have 16, which is the junior second units, and then our council committee assignments, can we do it?
Yes.
Okay, so let's move on to 15.
Here, Renee, we also have item seven, and I would move that, why don't we continue item seven to the next meeting?
That's fine. For me, that's fine. Does that work for everyone?
Yep.
Okay, so we're going on to item 15, and Garrett, staff report.
Although the staff report does say the town clerk would make the presentation.
Oh, Madam Clerk.
That's okay, I'm just, what does say that? Anyway, this is the second reading of the ordinance addressing amendments to the emergency homeless shelter. You consider this on January 13th, the planning commission recommended approval, and what this does is it just makes some changes to meet HCD's requirements of management plans for the emergency housing shelter ordinance.
Any questions from council? No questions, no public, no public comment? Can I entertain a motion?
I'd like to make a motion, I'd like to make a motion to waive the second reading and read by title only and adopt ordinance number 799, an ordinance of the town council of the town of Fairfax, amending section 17.138.010, emergency homeless sheltered standards of title 17, zoning of the Fairfax Town Code.
Second.
Okay, that's motion Kohler and second read, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Moving on to item 16, staff report, Michelle.
Since Michelle has designated me her staff report person...
Okay.
The presentation is, the, this is the second reading of the ordinance to allow and regulate junior second units within existing single-family residences. It was pointed out to us that there is a type, so in your supplement, you do have the corrected ordinance. In essence, you did, introduced it and did your first reading in January, the planning commission is recommending approval. Again, this is creating whole new standards related to allowing and regulating junior second units within single-family residences.
Any questions?
Yes, I, oh, you do, too?
No, he said no, so John?
Okay, I do, and in reading this, I know this is second reading, am I correct in reading this, that there is no provision to dissuade owners or prevent them from creating hotel efficiency unit in the form of a Airbnb-type setup in these junior second units?
Well, it does need to be owner occupied.
The property does, but the junior second unit?
Well, there'd be no way really for us to even figure that out.
Well, presumably, they'd be listing it.
If they listed it, but then we'd need to catch that. Right now, Airbnb, or short-term rentals aren't allowed under Town Code, so it'd be clear violation.
Yeah, but there's 300 Airbnbs in Fairfax right now.
Yeah, well, you got to look at the area, it's not, it's not that many.
That's what I've been told.
No, there's, that, that's, if you, if you type, we digress, but if you type in Fairfax, you'll get all of them are in, so you need to narrow it down, so there's not that many. But the issue comes down to, while it's not allowed, it doesn't mean someone can do it. Even if we allow this, there's no way to regulate that without some type of ability to check that. So if we find out, someone complains, then we code-enforce it, but there's no way within here to say, I mean, you could say you can't rent it out, and it may actually say that in here, but reality is, there's really no way to enforce that, but because it's owner occupied, you're assuming that's going to provide a hindrance to doing that.
But you already mentioned that it's already in violation of the Town Code to do that, because short, for everything, short-term rentals are in violation of the Town Code, right? So that applies to much more than this.
And are we not, we're going to take that up at some point, so we may want to specify that to the junior second units at that time? If we're going to look at short-term rentals and...
Sure, you can do that.
Yeah.
It actually, for some reason, I'm thinking maybe it's in here, but I couldn't tell you off the top of my head.
I come through and I didn't find anything.
I don't think that it should be specifically called out in here. I think at the time that we take up the Airbnb issue, we should consider that for much broader than just this kind of thing.
Yeah, but it's...
And I think we are on the second reading.
Hotel room size, you know, I thought it might be behooves to mention it in here, even though it would mess up the first and second reading.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, we're talking about moving this marijuana measure down the road indefinitely, I think that's a really good point, and I think it, it would warrant some language requiring that a junior second unit...
I think Garrett's got something.
Okay, so, I'm sorry.
Be, you know, not, not be a short-term rental.
Why don't you let Garrett address it?
I think this is the provision, I recall, we had discussion, and the planning commission had a discussion, and it's under owner occupancy. So it says, either the primary residence or the junior second unit shall be owner occupied. So it's one or the other has to be owner occupied. So the owner could choose to live in the junior second unit and rent out their house, or they could choose to live in the house and rent out their unit. You're talking about short-term rentals, so I think you're better served, once you talk about short-term rentals and what's allowed in that provision, than trying to put something here, because right now, it's not allowed, and I think it's just going to get really confusing over what, what's happening, what's happening here.
Well, what's our current ordinance with respect to short-term rentals?
Technically, you need a use permit.
I think it's worth it, though, to, I mean, we don't want to make junior second units just so someone can Airbnb them.
No, but it's the same issue. When you get to short-term rentals, one of the things you'll have to look at is the issue of, do you want to allow second units to be short-term rentals? Probably not. Within that, you can also address the issue regarding these junior second units, and where you want to put the different provisions in. But the only reason maybe I'm pushing back on this is, you've got to remember, it's all about enforcement, and it's very difficult, the more you put these things in, of how we're going to enforce it. But if you do it under the short-term rentals, when you're talking about it, it'll be very clear, then it'll apply to certain things, and it'll be clearer.
So Garrett, perhaps we could then expedite that? So Garrett, perhaps we could then expedite that, that issue, going forward, so that it would satisfy this, leaving this open without having that provision, or that stipulation? So, where were you thinking?
It would come with your dispensary ordinance. No, I'm just kidding. It's on the list of things to do, we do plan to do it sooner than later.
Because it has come up multiple times.
Right, because of business license.
So, I think, here is, 10 minutes ago, Garrett said, short-term rentals are banned. So, am I correct? Okay. So, they're banned in junior second units? Yes? What more are we talking about?
And I, I feel, I want to speak up and say this, um, you know what, we had a public process for junior second units, we had, we, we already know people are poised to do this. To start introducing this topic, which is already banned throughout Fairfax now, to junior second units, also puts a pall on a real opportunity for affordable housing. We will take this up, and we will look at this, and I'm sure we will have plenty of arguments about whether or not we want to allow Airbnbs. But I strongly disagree with the idea of putting something in this now, and delaying this one. We know we have people waiting for junior second units, ready to go, and those will be, for the most part, affordable housing. So let's move forward on this, and I'd like to make a motion to-
I, I, I would respectfully disagree. I think, you know, it's another month, you know, with reading it is-
I respectfully disagree very strongly, because we had an open public process, and at that time, on the first reading, it should have been brought up then, and I don't think it's fair. Because you're adding a stigma on junior second units, that every place in Fairfax already has that.
And your concern is addressed by the fact that we have a, a townwide ban on Airbnb second units, or anywhere else. So it's already existing.
What, what is the language currently, with respect to second units, that?
It's not specific to second units.
It's not specific.
I'm sorry, not specific to-
It's not specific to second.
Specific to short-term rentals.
Our interpretation on short-term rentals, it would require a use permit, and so you'd go through the planning process, but I think-
But that's, I'm sorry, because I understand Peter's concerned about this, is that your interpretation, where is it actually codified?
No one's ever envisioned, our code never envisioned, short-term rentals. What we're looking at is, we're considering that lodging, lodging's anything less than 30 days, and so that requires a, clearly, a use permit, that's our determination, and that's what we're following. But, I think, if I recall, and I recall, to address Councilmember Lax's concerns, and Councilmember Reed, is the Planning Commission had this discussion related to short-term rentals, junior second units, is that the right thing to do, how we're gonna control it? Same, exact discussion. And the council did, to a certain extent, when we talked about this. And what I recall, that, what, what came up with an owner occupancy, that we have the thing about primary residence, junior second unit, or the home has to be owner-occupied. And then we added this affidavit of occupancy, and so that, initially, when they created, gets inspected. And then, should they ever sell their unit, we added this thing about, this affidavit has to be provided, and we check it on resale inspections. So if the home's ever sold, it gives us an opportunity to go in there, take a look at the unit, kinda see, it's checking the condition, but it's also kinda give us an idea, to figure out, hey, have they just been renting this thing out, or how it's working? I, I think, well, you know, maybe I'm backing off my statement. Obviously, if you wait 30 days, and that delays everything. Are there people that are inquiring and like to proceed? Absolutely. How much that impacts them, I, I couldn't tell you, but I do know, short-term rentals are better addressed under short-term rentals, when you have that discussion. Right now, it's banned, if someone were to do it, there's no difference, if you stuck it in the code.
So, my recommendation is that we get to that, uh, short-term rental issue sooner than later. And so that we can, and so that we can be clear, and we can see how it applies to our junior second units, and then-
And I would agree that that's a good argument, and, and I think I would disagree with you, Peter, that it should not be in this. I've been convinced.
Okay, so I think we see where we're all at, but I, if anyone would like to make a motion, let's do that.
Okay, I think, go ahead.
Oh, okay. I will move waiving second reading, and reading by title only, to adopt ordinance number 800, and ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Fairfax, amending Fairfax Code Chapter 17.048, residential second units, 17.076, RS 7.5, single-family residential zone, medium density, 17.080, RS 6, single-family residential zone, high density, 17.084, RD 5.5-7, residential zone, high density. Why, why didn't I let you take this on? 17.116 SF-RMP, single-family residential master plan district, and 17.124 UR, upland residential zone of Title 17, zoning of the Fairfax Town Code, to adopt junior second unit regulations.
Second. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, so that was Reed, motion Reed, and second, Kohler, and, um, all, yes, any, any, yes? Okay. Unanimous. Thank you. Hey, we have our final item this evening, and this was continued from January 13th, so let's go forward, Garrett, or Michelle? Michelle, it's your turn.
All right. I'll do this one. So this is the time of year when you look at your assignments to all the different boards and commissions and committees, where you represent the town, that you spoke of earlier this evening. And on the backside of this staff report, you'll see the list from last year, except that I made the changes, there are certain committees where the mayor and vice mayor are automatically moved upon selection. So, with that, that concludes the staff report.
So, um, would a council member like to propose how it is that we might want to go through this, or?
Well, I think I would just, I would just say this, is that I'm happy with everything I have, but if anybody is interested in becoming the alternate on the A-bag, which actually, I thought mistakenly that Peter Lax was the alternate and not me, but I'm happy to keep it if no one's interested in it, but I'm fine with all mine.
Okay, so maybe we'll actually do it that way. So, um, would anybody be interested in being the alternate on the A-bag?
Um, yeah, I could do that.
Okay. So, Michelle, are you, so we're just noting this way. Okay, so Peter will become the alternate. Anyone else want to go through your list?
No.
We have one happy, and John?
I'm happy now.
Are you happy, Barbara, with your, um-
I'm happy with everything.
With your climate action committee?
Yes, I'm happy with that.
Okay, excellent. John?
Yeah, I'm also, um, I'm cognizant of the fact that last time around, there was, you know, the two newest members of, of the council ended up with a lot of alternate positions, and, you know, I think that that should be looked at. I mean, the people who are, you know, if somebody really wants something, they should bring it up.
You mean, the alternates?
Yeah, or of, of any of us. Because now's the time to talk about that.
Yeah, I, I thought I was the Marin Telecommunications Agency alternate.
Um, actually, I saw that you thought that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought he was, too.
And I would actually be very happy if you would want to do that officially, because I'm not doing it.
Yeah.
I thought he was.
I did, too.
I kept telling everybody he was.
In fact, when you said that, I thought, hmm.
Yeah.
Okay, so can, would you like to make that official change?
Yeah, I'd like to take that, take that on, um-
All right, David, you're fine.
Yep.
You think, it looks like you need a few more things.
And when you get to two intense flood meetings on a almost daily basis, we'll talk about it.
Okay. John, are you, we determined that you're good?
Yeah, I'm good.
My only question on mine is that the youth commission liaison is not really a, an accurate way to describe what I do with youth. So is that a conversation for another time?
I think at one time, we had that.
I know the role, but it's not that.
Oh, no, that's fine. I mean, the idea is, we don't really have a youth commission, so you're not really technically a liaison.
But I think there is, there is an important role that can come and morph out of that, and not in the form of commission, but we can talk about that offline.
Well, I think you're just talking of what it, what you'd like it to be, it's really up to council.
I think that it speaks to, that there's no liaison on council to Park, or to Fairfax Recreation as part of Park, and that it is more in the position of, you know, advocating for youth programs, being there, keeping people informed, getting a pulse from the community of what the youth, the youth are not our most, uh, well-attended-to part of our community.
So you like to be the Park liaison?
I, I don't know how, how it would look, because it's not, that's not all of what Park does, obviously. So, but, but I don't want to take this time right now, we'll keep that position as a day.
Actually, now's the time to do it. Now is the time.
It is senior liaison, we don't have such a community there.
But we do. We have our Commission on Aging person, and our Age Friendly Communities person.
I have a delightful opportunity to chat with-
I've been with Jody on a pretty regular basis.
Okay.
Which committee is that?
It's not an official committee.
There you have it.
Actually, the Age Friendly Task Force is a subcommittee of Park, and I believe you were the council liaison to that, when it was formed about a year ago.
Then I've been meeting, meeting those expectations.
Okay, so I mean, I think the original intent of, of this youth commission liaison was to try and generate some energy around creating a youth commission, and that has never really come to pass, but there are youth programs in development. And so I think that what I'm talking about is just switching that, you're looking at me like I'm crazy, but-
So, can we just say you're the Park liaison, and you could modify that any way you wish?
I think David's the Park liaison. Why don't we, why are we making such a, why are, can I just say, why do, why do we need to make such a formal thing? Is that, if we don't have a youth commission, then there is no liaison to it, but that's not to say that we couldn't actually have a youth commission, but when we do, it just seems to me to put, put something down that doesn't exist, is presenting something that isn't accurate.
Well, no, I don't think it should be here. That's what I'm saying, but it could be something else that would serve the function, that I think the, the intention of that role is to be a liaison to youth.
Is that why we're striking it out?
Why don't we just, why don't we strike it out, and then-
We'll develop something else?
Yeah.
Okay.
Can I ask another question?
Listen, John, it's, we spent all the Measure K money, right? Where, where?
So what are you overseeing?
Pretty much, basically, we did spend all the Measure K money, and then we renegotiated the bonds, and we had some more money to spend, and another bond is coming up for that. So there is a little tiny reason to still keep that there.
All right.
The only other thing, I mean, I, I mean, I don't think we have a Trails Committee right now as a subcommittee.
That's ad hoc?
It's an ad hoc committee of the-
And I think we should keep it as ad hoc?
Yeah, I'm fine with that. I just thought I would raise it so ugly, had to-
No, I think it's ad hoc.
Yeah, yeah.
We like that.
I mean, my only, I'm sorry, I know you're all packing up, but I, I'm, could we just, can I get your advice on whether you think there should be a council liaison to Park or not?
I think that's just really up to the council. I think you have liaisons to some committees, it's really up to you. If you, if I had to guess, if you said, oh, I'd like to be the council liaison to Park, it would seem like the other council member would say, that's great, but I don't know.
More power to you.
I just feel as though it's maybe one of the committees, that we don't have much, sometimes it feels a little disjointed, and they're making decisions that I feel, but-
Well, if I may make a suggestion, and if you feel you, like you have energy for that, there is no liaison to the volunteer committee, but I show up to all their meetings, mostly.
Okay, so that's not an official liaison?
It's, it's not an official liaison, but I am the council member most interested. In fact, when I ran for council, I made a promise to the people on the volunteer board that I'd still show up at their meetings.
Well, you do.
And I, I still do, so.
Good man, John.
I mean, I care about the volunteer board, so.
Okay. So, um, I, we're gonna hear a, a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Before we do, do you just want to make sure that you, all these, there aren't that many changes, but I just want to make sure that we have them recorded.
Yes, good idea.
Would you like me to read out what I got?
Yes, please.
Okay. So, Councilmember Kohler has everything the same, except she is giving up the A-bag alternate position. Mayor Goddard is keeping it the same, except she's giving up the Marin Telecommunications Agency alternate position, and she is, we are getting rid of the youth liaison, the youth commission liaison, because there's no such thing. Councilmember Lax is taking over the A-bag alternate position, and the MTA alternate position. Keeping everything he has, and that's it. Councilmember Reed, staying the same. And Councilmember Winesoff, staying the same.
All right.
Okay.
So we've had a motion to adjourn, yes?
Second.
Okay. Bye, everyone.
All right. Don't you want to ask for a vote?